Hold on, hold on. Welcome to the New York City Council hearing on contracts, joined with Public Housing and Oversight and Investigations. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices, and at no time should you approach the dais. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
This meeting is called to order. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Councilman Chris Banks, the Chair of the Committee on Public Housing, and I'm glad that my first hearing as chair is being held jointly with the Committee on Contracts and the Committee on Oversight and Investigation. We are joined by my colleagues from all three committees, Councilman Rivera and Councilman Giose, and Councilman Sanchez and Councilman Bacher. While I'm glad to be chairing this committee and to be here with my colleagues, but I'm also deeply disappointed that my first hearing as chair is to focus on the corruption scandal in NITIA. The allegations, the arrests made earlier this month undermines New Yorkers' trusts, and even more importantly, the residents of NITIA's trusts, that public money is being spent appropriately, the repairs to NITIA apartments are being made correctly and quickly, and that NITIA is on the right track. The allegations of bribery, extortion, and awarding of no-bid contracts announced by the U.S. Attorney early this month extend to almost 100 NITIA developments across the entire NITIA portfolio. As the U.S. Attorney stated in his press conference, "The breadth of the allegations show that there was a culture of corruption among NITIA superintendents that allegedly extended until as recently as last summer." Today, my colleagues and I want to hear from NITIA about what steps they have taken to address these allegations, both in the immediate and aftermath, and what steps they likely will take in the future. I'm pleased that both Department of Investigation, the U.S. Attorney said NITIA leadership is cooperating and pledged to institute DOI's recommendations, but there were still questions to be answered. DOI made recommendations when contractors were indicted in 2001 for the other half of these alleged transactions, but only some of the recommendations were accepted. I would like to know the decision-making process around which recommendations were accepted and which were not. I would also like to know what the gaps are in the process and oversight that allowed these alleged behavior to continue until last year. And finally, I want to know what steps are going to be taken to try and earn back NITIA residents' trust. I would like to thank my staff, Mike Lambert, along with the Public Housing Committee staff, Jose, Charles, Kim, Dan, Nicholas, Christopher, and Connor, for the work they've put in this hearing. I will now turn it over to Chair Brewer to make her opening statement.
Thank you very much. I am Gail Brewer, and I'm Chair of the Council's Committee on Oversight and Investigations, and I know we'll hear from Chair Wan. She is on maternity leave, and we have to have a quorum in order for her to speak, so that's why she's not speaking right now, but I'm sure we will get a quorum. I'm delighted to be conducting today's hearing jointly with the Committee on Public Housing and the Committee on Contracts. I do want to thank Councilmember Chris Banks and Councilmember Julie Wan for all the hard work, as well as that of their team supporting this hearing together. The recent arrests of 70 NITIA employees on bribery and extortion charges, while disturbing, are unfortunately not surprising. NITIA does have a history of corruption and abuse surrounding the use of micro purchases. These arrests are just the latest example. Micro purchases at the center of this bribery and extortion scheme have a streamlined approval process to give development employees, those are the folks in the field, the ability to quickly address small-scale problems in their buildings without having to go through a lengthy bidding process. We all want apartments to be repaired quickly. It's a laudable goal, particularly the vacant ones, to be honest with you. However, as we have seen over and over, the lack of oversight makes these types of contracts vulnerable to abuse and fraud. Department of Investigation, and I want to thank the Commissioner and her staff, has repeatedly warned NITIA that these microcontracts are vulnerable to corruption, but the agency did not act. In 2021, the Department of Investigation made several recommendations to NITIA, and I know it was before this DOI and this NITIA, but I was around, regarding micropurchase reforms, which the agency summarily rejected. It was not until 70 current and former NITIA employees were arrested that they agreed to implement a set of recommendations made by DOI, and I appreciate NITIA doing that. It shouldn't, however, take 70 arrests for NITIA to shut down known opportunities for bribery and extortion by development managers, particularly when DOI has given them a roadmap on how to get this done. This is no excuse, and I want to add that my office has received several people who have come forward as whistleblowers with the same kinds of problems in the last couple of weeks, and I have sent them to DOI. Today, we are here to examine NITIA's response to the most recent bribery and extortion that was uncovered in the micropurchase contracts. We want to consider how we can ensure the public housing residents can have their urgent repair needs addressed in a timely manner without leaving the process open to bribery, extortion, and all kinds of corruption, like what was recently uncovered by the federal prosecutors in Manhattan. I just want to add also, you know, it's hard because residents complain that they are seeing the offices of the development staff, so-called, local staff, fixed up, and not their apartments. And these are the kinds of things that we should have paid more attention to. Before I turn this wonderful meeting back to Chair Banks, I'd like to ask the great public advocate to say a few words. I do also want to thank Nicole Kata, Legislative, who's General Counsel to this committee, Legislative Analyst Erica Cohen, and Alex Yablon, and Financial Policy Analyst Owen Kotowski, and from my office, Sam Goldsmith. And now I turn it over to our great public advocate, Jomani Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the word great before that.
You're lucky he won't always get it, just so you know.
Good afternoon. My name is Jomani Williams, Public Advocate of the City of New York. Thank you very much, Chair Banks, Chair Wan, and Chair Brewer, and members of the Committee, Public Housing Contracts and Oversight and Investigations, for holding this hearing and allowing me the opportunity to provide a statement. New York City has a shortage of affordable housing that's been exacerbated by the pandemic. New Yorkers are subject to drastic increases in rent, predatory landlords, long waits for repairs and evictions. NITIA residents unfortunately are not exempt from such actions. While bribery and extortion have been rampant in government and in New York City for a very long time, one of the famous ones, Tammany Hall, the recent indictments of NITIA workers has led, has had a demoralizing effect on its residents, its ethical and trustworthy staff, which are many, and all New Yorkers. Back in 2021, the Department of Investigation sent a letter to former NITIA Chair Greg Russ, stating all the findings they found suspicious. NITIA was alerted multiple times but refused the recommendations. They had ample time to implement these or other changes, but did not do so. Every business organization or government agency must have measures in place to weed out corruption and fraud. NITIA's longstanding chronic budget deficit is no excuse to not put measures in place and reassess those measures on a regular basis. I've often said NITIA needs money and better management. Both of those things are huge problems for NITIA. Management is something that NITIA can do better at. NITIA would even without the money that is desperately needed. NITIA's inability to eradicate mold and make timely repairs has notoriously made them the worst landlord for six years in a row. According to the findings for 2023, there were 335 developments on the watch list with 177,569 units with violations. The average number of open work orders between January 2023 and November 2023 are 618,310. NITIA needs about $78 billion to resolve these necessary repairs. Therefore, the corrupt behavior of 70 NITIA employees rubs salt on the wounds of those residents who are waiting for repairs while critical dollars are being siphoned into the pockets of those employees. These charges are a clear indictment, indication of the extensive failure to make many repairs, and the failure to weed out possible corruption. NITIA has consistently failed to create a healthy and safe living environment for its residents. These indictments are a symptom of the larger problem of doing timely repairs. It takes so long for repairs to get addressed that no one notices a disruption in the repair process. Equally important, hazardous conditions are not addressed, not abated, and oftentimes escalates from an individual apartment to a building-wide problem. My office and I released a report on NITIA called "How the Other Half Lives in Public Housing," highlighting the dangerous conditions at NITIA developments that we witnessed during our five borough tour in 2022. They had frequent issues with mold, leaks, and rodent insect infestation. Residents are facing excessive filth in their homes with unsanitary conditions that can cause an unhealthy living environment that can lead to illness. It's been one and a half years since we released it, and it has yet to be addressed in any meaningful way, such as the Jacob Rees water contamination and recent death from Legionnaires' disease. Just to, there was about, there were several recommendations that we had, but just ones that are very appropriate right now, which was number three. The metric used to hire contractors should be improved. NITIA should develop a reliable list of contractors that can be used within the developments. The current hiring system is unreliable, and NITIA may hire someone who they know with the lowest price, which results in NITIA's crippling housing infrastructure. And number four, NITIA should develop a reliable list of contractors that can apply through the RFP process to do work with their developments. And we also discuss the Healthy Homes Act and automatic inspections. As we watch the legal process unfold, I hope to hear from NITIA what approach it will take to weed out corruption, address much-needed and longer-waited repairs, while ensuring the protection of residents. I do have to say, it feels just like another day in NITIA, like we've been here before, having discussion again. I really hope something is going to change. This type of microcontracting, there's no way that anyone can look at it and not say, without the proper guardrails, without the proper oversight, something was going to go wrong? And in fact, someone did. DOI did. Why NITIA would not act on that makes absolutely no sense, and it has nothing to do with the money that is absolutely needed for NITIA, but it has to do with somebody's incompetence in overseeing this. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Public Advocate. Now, we're going to go to Councilmember Chair Julie Wan.
Thank you so much, Council Chair Banks, and thank you so much to the public advocate and Councilmember Brewer. Good afternoon. My name is Councilmember Julie Wan. I'm the Chair of Committee on Contracts. I am pleased to join my colleagues from all three committees in convening this important joint oversight hearing examining corruption and mismanagement within NITIA's micropurchasing contracting. The alleged bribery scheme by NITIA employees uncovered earlier this year marks a serious breach of public trust, as we've heard from all three speakers before me. 70 current and former NITIA staff across nearly 100 developments are implicated. This pay-to-play culture for certain maintenance contracts is clearly widespread, including in my own district in Ravenswood Houses, as well as Queensbridge Houses. As Chair of the Committee on Contracts, I am deeply concerned anytime city procurement rules and standards fall short. The micropurchasing process at NITIA, while well-intentioned and aiming to expedite urgent repairs, clearly enable abuse by leaving too much discretion to frontline staff without sufficient guardrails. Unfortunately, previous scandals and warning signs regarding vulnerabilities in the microcontracting process went unheeded. As a result, instead of efficiently maintaining buildings for NITIA residents, public funds lined the pockets of unscrupulous employees and vendors. Going forward, we must ensure enhanced accountability, oversight, and transparency around all NITIA contracting. As NITIA works to implement the 14 CFIREFORM recommendations put forward by DOI, after the recent indictments, this committee and our colleagues on the Public Housing and Oversight and Investigation Committee will continue to closely monitor that progress. At today's hearing, we will examine the factors that enabled widespread corruption within the micropurchasing program and identify solutions to restore integrity in the process. The committee seeks to understand what NITIA management knew regarding vulnerabilities, when they knew it, and why action was not taken sooner. We want concrete commitments regarding next steps to implement oversight changes that can prevent this degree of fraud in the future. Most importantly, we must determine how NITIA residents suffered as a result of the misuse funds and corrupted process regarding urgently needed repairs to their homes. Going forward, the public deserves full confidence that every dollar funding NITIA works addresses real maintenance needs rather than lining their own pockets. NITIA residents deserve nothing less. The committee is expected to hear testimony today from NITIA, DOI, and residents themselves to provide all needed context around the recent indictments. I'd like to thank my co-chairs for convening this timely and essential hearing. And before we begin, I'd like to thank the Contracts Committee staff, Senior Legislative Counsel Alex Polenoff, Policy Analyst Alex Yablon, the Principal Finance Analyst Nia Hyatt, as well as my Chief of Staff Nicole Loda, my Legislative Director Isaac Blazenstein, and my Comms Director Jenna Lang, for all their hard work in preparing for this hearing. And I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Mealy has also joined us, as well as Councilmember Aviles. And I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Chair Banks.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're now, in keeping with tradition of this committee, before we hear from the Department of Investigation, we're going to go into our pre-panel of our witnesses. And also, let me recognize Councilman Jaeger and Councilman Stevens.
We'll now move to resident pre-panel. This will be on Zoom. When you hear your name, you'll get a prompt to be unmuted. The witness testimony today will be two minutes. When you hear your name, please, the, you'll be, excuse me, you will be prompted to be unmuted. The first resident, the first resident will be Nigel Dupree. You may begin when you're unmuted.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing today? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
First of all, I want to thank the Council Board for hearing our concerns. As a resident in a NITIA community, I'm sure other residents have seen this before. Two questions is, how do y'all, how are y'all going to attack it in a way where it changes? And how many actually residents do y'all have on the board with y'all to have an input from the residents' point of view? So that will be my question, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The second resident on the pre-panel will be Ms. Aisha Torres. You may begin when you're unmuted. Starting time. My apologies, Ms. Torres dropped off to Zoom.
Okay, now we're going to move forward with DOI. Can the DOI witnesses, thank you.
If I could just have you raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes, I do.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jocelyn Strauber, and I'm the Commissioner of the Department of Investigation, known as DOI. Thank you, Chair Banks, and members of the Committee on Public Housing, Chair Wan, and members of the Committee on Contracts, and Chair Brewer, and members of the Committee on Oversight and Investigations, for the opportunity to speak about DOI's recommendations to the New York City Housing Authority, NITIA, as they relate to micropurchase no-bid contracts. As you know, DOI oversees NITIA through its Office of the Inspector General for NITIA, and we conduct investigations that can result in criminal charges, administrative findings, or both. When an investigation identifies corruption vulnerabilities, DOI makes recommendations to reform city policies and procedures, called policy and procedure recommendations, or PPRs, in order to address those issues. DOI's recommendations do three critical things. First, they alert city agencies to corruption risks and provide a means to prevent them. Second, they prompt a dialogue between the agency and DOI concerning the importance of the recommendations in addressing the risks the agency faces and the challenges, if any, to implementation. And three, create an environment of ongoing accountability, not just by DOI, but by other governing entities and the public, because DOI's recommendations are publicly issued, either via our website or on some occasions in a public report. In short, DOI's recommendation process promotes transparency in government and accountability on the part of agencies that deliver vital public services, and invites the participation of other governing bodies and the public in DOI's anti-corruption work. Today, I will provide you with a summary of the micropurchase no-bid contract investigation DOI conducted with the Brooklyn District Attorney's Office that led DOI to issue five PPRs to NITIA in 2021 and NITIA's related responses. And I will summarize the 14 recommendations that DOI announced earlier this month after the arrests of 70 current and former NITIA employees. For ease of reference, those 14 recommendations are also attached to my written testimony that has been submitted for the record. I want to make clear that I'm not able to address or provide information about the recent arrests or the related recent investigation, which was handled jointly with the United States Attorney for the Southern District of New York and our other federal partners. Micropurchase no-bid contracts are generally used at NITIA to procure small repairs directly at the development level, so that they can be done quickly without a complex bidding and procurement process. NITIA employees who work in the housing developments, principally supervisors, handle these contracts. In approximately 2019, DOI began looking at NITIA's micropurchase contracting process due to reports from NITIA employees that they had received bribe offers from vendors doing business at NITIA housing developments in Brooklyn. DOI partnered with the Brooklyn District Attorney's Office to conduct the investigation, which included the use of undercover DOI investigators who posed as assistant superintendents at a number of developments. The investigation found that between 2019 and 2021, nine vendors paid bribes totaling tens of thousands of dollars to NITIA employees or DOI undercover investigators to obtain lucrative no-bid micropurchase contracts awarded at the housing development level. In 2021, DOI and the Brooklyn District Attorney announced bribery charges against nine vendors. Ultimately, after three additional vendors were charged, 12 vendors in total pled guilty to either rewarding official misconduct in the second degree, a Class E felony, or giving unlawful gratuities, a Class A misdemeanor. These vendors were associated with 11 companies. The companies also pled guilty to either a felony, a misdemeanor, or a violation. DOI warned other city agencies about these vendors in light of the charged conduct by entering cautions into Passport, which flag, as you know, derogatory information about vendors for city agency contracting officers who check Passport regularly for information on city vendors. The investigation and the charges that I just described made clear, in our view, that NITIA needed tighter controls over the micropurchasing process to prevent this type of corruption. DOI therefore issued in 2021 five PPRs focused on the vendors as well as the NITIA supervisors. Most importantly, DOI proposed that NITIA move contracting authority from the development-level staff to a central procurement department, and that NITIA conduct additional screening of vendors. Specifically, DOI recommended that NITIA move responsibility for small procurement awards from frontline superintendents and property managers to NITIA's central procurement department, which will receive requests for small procurement work from the housing development staff, and then award jobs to contractors on a rotating basis. Second, DOI proposed that NITIA lower the cost threshold for vendor screening review from $250,000 to $100,000, so that all vendors whose aggregate work for NITIA is $100,000 or above on an annual basis are subject to screening by DOI's Office of the Inspector General. Third, DOI recommended that NITIA conduct cursory integrity screenings at the inception of work by small procurement contractors, even those below the existing $250,000 aggregate contract limit. NITIA's procurement department, we recommended, should check Passport, the city's contracting database, to identify contracting cautions by any city agency. Fourth, we recommended that NITIA adopt a fixed-price list for small procurement jobs to prevent overbilling, that is, to prevent contractors from charging as close as possible to the $10,000 micropurchase limit even for trivial jobs. And finally, we recommended that oversight of small procurement jobs be further enabled by having housing development staff upload all signed invoices into NITIA's centralized payment database known as Oracle. Prior to and after issuing these recommendations, DOI maintained a robust dialogue with NITIA about the significance of the proposals in light of the investigation's findings. NITIA ultimately implemented only the third recommendation of the five that I just mentioned concerning cursory integrity screenings, and rejected the rest, although NITIA did take some other steps intended to improve controls around the procurement process. Those included training of development staff involved in awarding contracts about ethical procurement and the consequences of corruption, training them to check Dunn &amp; Bradstreet, a risk-management tool for potential red flags about vendors prior to solicitation of contracts, and developing templates that itemized labor and material costs involved with each quote from the vendor. Those templates were provided to the development staff for their use. Problems within the micropurchase process persisted, however, despite the changes that NITIA implemented, in particular because frontline supervisors at the housing development level continued to have primary authority over small procurement purchases, despite DOI's recommendation against this practice. DOI worked with the U.S. Attorney for the Southern District of New York on two other separate matters that in 2022 led to the arrests of two former NITIA supervisors on charges of accepting thousands of dollars in bribes to dole out no-bid contracts. Last year, both of those former NITIA employees were convicted and sentenced to federal prison terms for their criminal conduct. The 14 recommendations that DOI issued as a result of its most recent investigation are attached to my testimony, as I mentioned. They focus on strengthening oversight and controls around the micropurchase process, so that it is less vulnerable to abuse by both NITIA employees and vendors, while still maintaining efficient service for NITIA residents. These recommendations also call for additional education of NITIA employees on topics including how to identify corruption and fraud, and their duty as city employees to report corruption and illegal bribery and gratuities to DOI. Three of the recommendations DOI recently made are similar to those made in 2021 that were not implemented. DOI continues to believe that these policy changes are essential to remedying the vulnerabilities that we have now seen in a number of separate investigations. Specifically, these recommendations are that NITIA should remove responsibility for micropurchases from staff within the housing developments, and place that responsibility with specialized central staff outside of the developments with the necessary expertise, establish a schedule of cost estimates for the top 15 types of services and goods most often obtained by developments through the micropurchase method, and when a vendor's cost proposal exceeds the cost estimate, require the vendor to provide a written explanation for the additional cost. And finally, review all micropurchases whether or not in excess of the cost estimate schedule prior to processing payment to a vendor. These reviews should be conducted by NITIA staff outside the development commissioning the work, and should include a review of relevant documentation, such as the Statement of Services, before-and-after photos, and the vendor's invoice. NITIA CEO Lisa Bova-Hyatt's response to these 14 recommendations was unequivocal. NITIA fully supports them, and is working with DOI's OIG for NITIA to implement them. Our Inspector General overseeing NITIA has been actively working with the agency on this effort. Some of these recommendations, I understand, will take some time to implement as they require restructuring of the micropurchase process, but I understand also that NITIA aims to implement the majority of the 14 recommendations within the next year, and NITIA can provide more detail, I'm sure, on the exact timeframes. The micropurchase process is critical to NITIA's ability to efficiently obtain the goods and services necessary to maintain the housing developments and be responsive to residents' needs. It is equally critical that the process be subject to thoughtful oversight and controls, so that NITIA's resources are used for the benefit of NITIA residents, and not to line the pockets of corrupt vendors and staff. I believe these recommendations offer a path forward that seeks to ensure integrity in this process while maintaining the necessary efficiency. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, we just want to recognize Councilmember Ransler and Kishan. Now, we just want to recognize Councilmember Ransler and Kishan.
Now, we're going to go into questions. And thank you again, Commissioner, for coming this afternoon. I just want to get straight into it. DOI's February 6, 2024 letter listing its 14 recommendations to NICA regarding micropurchases specifies that three of the 14 recommendations are similar to the ones DOI made to NICA in 2021. Are there any other recommendations DOI made to NICA in 2021 that, to your knowledge, NICA rejected or otherwise declined to adopt?
Certainly, the three that I've mentioned are the ones that we believe are of continued relevance and significance. I would have to go back and look more precisely. There's certainly nothing else that we think needs to be implemented in connection with these issues that are not included in the current 14 recommendations.
All right. And to your knowledge, what did NICA do or decline to do in response to DOI's 2021 recommendations related to the micropurchase contracts?
So, the recommendation that the micropurchase process be restructured so that it be removed from the housing development staff and escalated to a central unit within NICA, that was a recommendation that was made back in 2021 that was not accepted and that we're making again now and that we understand NICA does prepare, plan to implement. Another recommendation related to establishing a cost schedule for micropurchases to better control overbilling.
Okay.
That recommendation also was not implemented, although I understand that now it will be. It's one that we're making again, made again a couple weeks ago. And finally, we recommended that information supporting the fact that the work had actually been done, such as photographs, the statement of service, the invoice, that all of that be uploaded to a central portal and that it be reviewed by a senior member of NICA staff outside of the housing developments before any payment be made. That's another recommendation that was made back in 2021, not implemented, that we expect will be implemented now.
Okay. What was NICA's stated reasoning for department investigation for not accepting all the DOI recommendations? And did the DOI investigators find NICA's reasons acceptable?
Well, you know, as you know, we make the recommendations, we press for the recommendations to be accepted. The agency ultimately makes the determination of what it is able and willing to do. I think with respect to restructuring the micropurchase process, and again, you know, NICA can speak to this as well, I'm sure, but I think the understanding was that that was a more radical change than NICA was able to undertake at that point. And so instead, they proposed some of the other measures that I mentioned, better training of the housing development staff on things like how to double-check, you know, the bona fides of a vendor, a better template that would force the vendor to itemize the aspects of their quote as a way to control overbilling. So, in our view, those alternatives were not sufficient, but that's my understanding of why NICA did not go forward with what we proposed, but had some additional changes that it wanted to make instead.
DOI's first recommendation in its February 6, 2024 letter is that NICA identify and implement an alternative staffing model for the micropurchase process that removes responsibility for micropurchases from staff within the housing development and places the responsibility instead on specialized centralized staff within necessary expertise. Does DOI have any recommendations regarding the ideal number or qualifications of staff that would best enable NICA to achieve the goals of this recommendation?
Certainly, we're thinking about staff who have expertise in procurement, but we have not made a recommendation about a specific number of staff in the unit that would need to be created to serve this function. And, you know, often what we try to do in our recommendations is put forth a conceptual policy change and let the agency, based on its expertise, work out the fine points, like exactly how many employees would be required for that task and where they would draw them from.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to come back. I'm going to turn it over now to Chairman Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. I mean, I just want to go back to that question because in the Monitor's report, I think there was a discussion about the challenges of working between the development staff, meaning the field staff, and central. There was a lot of tension. So, is that something that would continue, do you think, if it is that the central staff has more oversight than the local staff? I think the problem is we all want to have easily purchased at the right price at the locality so that the apartment can be fixed up more rapidly. That's the problem that we're trying to address. Obviously, it's not addressed. So, my question is on this staffing issue. I know you can't decide how many staff need to be there, but if there is staff in the development, meaning in the field and centrally, do you have some sense that that could continue to work because the Monitor thought there was too much tension?
Well, I think the way it would work is that we're not totally removing responsibility for the process from the development staff. They're going to make a proposal about the work that needs to be done. What they're not going to do is have the authority to do the contracting. And so I think it'll be important to have the unit sufficiently staffed so that it can keep pace with the requests, so that there isn't, you know, lengthy delays in having the centralized staff procure the vendor. And as you say, I think these are some of the concerns, and again, I'm not going to speak for them, but perhaps that NICA had about making this kind of structural change, and we certainly don't want to delay, you know, getting residents the services and work done that they need. But I do think that having the development staff make a recommendation as to what is needed to a centralized staff that then will identify the appropriate vendor, we're also recommending, I haven't talked about every single recommendation, but we're also recommending a pre-qualified list of vendors that has been fully vetted. So, I think it is possible to make the process move efficiently. You know, there can be different kinds of tension in workspaces, but I think this will enable, you know, the work to get done for the residents efficiently without, you know, the kind of issues that we've seen, and that's really what we're focused on.
Okay. I was going to ask you about prequalification because it sounds good on paper, but then sometimes, and I noticed in one of the news media articles, that the prequalified company was corrupt, but also on the prequalified list. So, how do you identify prequalifications? How do you, particularly after an investigation like this, should prequalification be different? How does it, how would it work the way it should work?
I think the list that you're referring to, and I'm aware of the article that you're mentioning, I think the list that you're referring to involved vendors who had the necessary expertise but had not yet been subject to the kind of checks that we're talking about, which could be, you know, their Dunn &amp; Bradstreet checks, their checks in the city's contracting database, there's checks with DOI. Those are all of the kind of checks that would need to be done for a vendor to be placed on the prequalified list, and those checks need to be done not just once, but on a routine basis to ensure that there hasn't been any changes in the information. And that's the kind of, you know, analysis that we're talking about before a vendor could be placed on that list, not simply that the vendor is one that can provide a particular kind of service.
Okay. So, that prequalified list, I don't know this, it exists now. Obviously, you recommend it to be done differently in one of your recommendations, but would it be a new list, so to speak, in order to deal with some of the challenges that you just outlined?
Certainly, it would be a new list, or it would subject any vendors that are currently on the list that could provide the services to additional screening before they could be used. We're not simply suggesting that existing lists, and I'm aware of the issues that have been raised with some of the vendors on those lists. We're not simply suggesting that those lists be used here. There's additional vetting that we're recommending.
That's helpful. I didn't understand that before. What are the vulnerability points in NICA's current micropurchase contracting process? And again, you sort of outlined this, it allows the fraud. What best practices around the micropurchase contracting does DOI recommend that NICA adopt to close those vulnerability gaps? So, maybe you'll just say that the contracting should be done centrally. Maybe that's your answer, but I wanted to hear.
Well, I think the most important ones, that is one of the most important ones, the removing the responsibility or removing the contracting responsibility from the housing development staff. I also think the cost estimate schedule is quite important because one of, you know, the things that was mentioned in the article, and I think you're referring to the article in the city.
I am.
Was the disparate costs for the same type of services or goods.
A light bulb for $708.
Exactly. So, if you have a cost schedule that says, you know, and we propose that the sort of top 15 goods and services, and you could tinker with the exact number to get it right, but that there be a schedule of what those items should cost. And what we've recommended is if it's going to cost more, that there be a written explanation, that that explanation be approved by somebody outside the development, the housing development staff, before the contracting goes forward. Again, these things do and can take a little more time, but our view is that that small amount of additional time is worth it to ensure that you can better control costs. So, I think that's another critical aspect of what we recommended. And the third piece is ensuring that the work was actually done, and that involves having photographs, before-and-after photographs that are centrally available, the statement of services and the invoice, again, to be reviewed by someone outside the development staff so that they can confirm that the residents are actually getting the services that NICA is paying for.
Thank you. Councilmembers Salamanca and Nurse are also here. Thank you very much. What role can technology and data analytics play in detecting and preventing fraud in this micropurchase program? Obviously, I know you have data analytics on your staff, as we do, so I want to know if there are some specific recommendations and is anything AI can do?
Well, I think certainly having the data available, sort of loading the data available that makes, you know, that reveals how much is being spent in different contracts with different vendors across different developments, that gives you data that you can compare. And if you see different prices, significantly different prices for what seem like similar items, then I think that's a red flag. So, I think that's something that, that's just one example of something that data analytics can do in this particular space.
Okay. How often does DOI meet with NICA? Obviously, maybe more recently than in the past, but how do you ongoing deal with not just this contract issue, but I'm sure there are others?
I mean, there's really a very, I can't give you sort of, you know, X number of times a day or week, but there is a robust, ongoing dialogue between, you know, our inspector general and his team and the NICA staff. So, that isn't, there is a sort of, I would describe that as an ongoing conversation on a number of issues, and the communication is quite good there. Obviously, there's been a lot of communication around these recommendations and NICA's agreement to them, but well before and beyond that.
So, will the new Monitor focus on, as the past did, on the mold and lead, but will the new Monitor just focus on those two issues or will they also have this under their purview?
I mean, I don't think the Monitor's mandate has changed, even though the Monitorship is continuing. So, I think it will have the same focus. Obviously, to the extent an issue like this not only impacts where the money is going, but also impacts whether the work is actually getting done and the quality of life in the development, that is within the Monitor's purview as well.
Okay. Does DOI's list of recommendations include adopting a requirement contracts model for micropurchases?
A requirement contracts model? I don't, I don't think it does. We're not proposing that there be a particular type of contract that's utilized, no.
Okay. And then just finally, I assume that the 14 suggestions and anything else that you might suggest, although you said that's pretty much it, will safeguard against contract corruption in the future. But who does the ongoing monitoring? Is that DOI, the Monitor, NICA itself? Who's in charge of that?
So, there is.
Because we tried this before and it didn't work, so we want to make sure it does in the future.
There is an actual, one of the recommendations actually requires the quality assurance and compliance departments at NICA to conduct semi-annual audits specifically of micropurchase data and to post those findings publicly. So, there's a specific audit requirement that we've attached to these recommendations and this issue. But as you say, the Monitor's oversight and DOI's oversight also encompasses these issues. And actually, I think our last recommendation is that NICA continue to report any irregularities or concerns that it sees to our agency.
Councilmember Juan, do you have questions?
Thank you so much, Chair Brewer. From what I understand, NICA is standalone, has its own standalone procurement process and does not fall under the portfolio of Mayor's Office of Contracts. So, can you explain the relationship between NICA and MOCs and what the difference is between your relationship with other city agencies?
You know, I think, if I could, I'm going to defer that question to NICA because I can't give you the particulars on their relationship with MOCs versus with how it works with others, with other city agencies. I mean, there's a review process that MOCs has and a whole contracting process, you know, that does apply to mayoral agencies and some other agencies, but I'm not, I'm not in a position to speak to the details of how it differs with NICA.
Okay. Because I'm most interested in the context of it all. So, to zoom out a little bit, for especially our NICA residents who are here to testify, could you help us understand the difference between NICA's micropurchasing process and the city's micropurchasing process for other city agencies, if there are any differences?
Yeah. You know, again, this is, this is not an area that I can really speak to in detail. The NICA process, the no-bid process, was specifically designed, and it's a model that's used in other, in other housing developments throughout the country. It's a model that's specifically designed to ensure that work can be done promptly without requiring an extensive bidding process. There are certainly ways within the city's contracting process, negotiated acquisitions and other ways of contracting that are more efficient. But again, I can't, I can't really speak to the details of the difference between the NICA contracting process and the city's process.
Okay.
Certainly, if that's, you know, I can, I can try to get more information about that, if that's something you'd like us to kind of fill out the picture for you, but unfortunately, I can't, I can't give you more on that right now.
Okay. We'll follow up. And how long does it take for the superintendent or property manager to identify a need and solicit a contractor for a micropurchasing contract? Do you know the timeline?
I don't know the exact timeline, no.
And who outside of the superintendent or property manager who solicits micropurchasing contracts can review or audit the supplies, services, or other needs listed in a micropurchasing contract? Because we want to know what guardrails you currently have and what guardrails you currently lack.
Right. Again, I think, I think NICA can speak better to the current guardrails in place. We're recommending some additional auditing requirements and review requirements. We're recommending sort of inserting a whole other level of review into the micropurchase process that I know doesn't exist now. That is different, though, than saying that there's no auditing or review available currently. So, I'm going to leave that question to NICA as well.
And to follow up from Councilmember Brewer's question about technology, what is NICA currently using or how is NICA tracking micropurchasing contracts today?
You know, I know that that information, some of the information that I mentioned, such as the vendor, the amount of the purchase, the housing development, I know all of that information is stored electronically and available centrally, but the exact data fields and how they do it, again, I can't speak to that specifically.
Per development, do you know how much funding is allocated to a development to make micropurchasing contracts? Is there a limit?
I don't.
Okay. And do you know if there's any type of training that property managers or superintendents or assistant superintendents receive on how to manage these micropurchasing contracts so that we understand where the liability is?
You know, there is training that I know was implemented, actually, sort of in lieu of some of the recommendations that we made back in 2021. There is additional training on how to check vendors, on anti-corruption, on corruption risks. We're recommending additional training, but I know there is currently training for the folks who do micropurchases based on the work that, the policies that NICA changed back in 2021 or 2022.
If you don't know, could you please follow up and let us know how often those micropurchasing trainings are received by the managers?
I can look into that, and NICA will probably have that information as well.
Okay. And one of the reasons for the changes in the micropurchasing procurement rules for NICA was for a need for speed. And we want to know what the NICA's current repair backlog is and what the difference has been because we know that we hear from residents over and over again, especially those who are here to testify, that their backlog has not been expedited in any way. They're actually still waiting a same amount of time, and there's still a huge issue of backlog or with negligence where cases are, work orders are closed without the actual fulfillment of the work order.
Again, I can't, I can't speak to the specifics of the length of the backlog at this point. NICA may be able to answer that question. If not, we can certainly get that information for you.
Okay. I'm going to turn it back to Chair Banks. Thank you.
I just want to. I just want to recognize Councilmember Salamanca and Councilman Nurse, Councilman Nurse. And also, now we'll move to Councilman, sorry, public advocate, Jemani Williams with questions.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. It's an honor to be called Councilmember. Honor. Thank you so much, Commissioner. My first question, just in any of the discussions that you had with NICA, particularly with the first reviews, did you get a sense of any of the issues with implementing what you were asking? Was it about money, or was the structure so entrenched, it was just, they felt too difficult to try to adopt some of the other recommendations that you made?
If, if you're speaking about the 2021-
Yes.
...recommendations, I mean, first of all, I want to be clear that those recommendations were actually made before I started, so I didn't have conversations at that point. But my understanding is it was both an issue relating to, it's costly and can be, you know, time consuming to restructure a whole process, and I think there was also a concern about maintaining the efficiency of the development level work.
Okay. And then, based on what the Chair just said, did you, did you find any of the investigations or anything that you read about the investigation? Did the, any of the changes before and after actually speed up the work that was being done?
So the changes that were made in light of what we found in 2021 were really intended to control the corruption risk, more, I believe, than they were intended to, to promote efficiency.
Yep.
And, and I think that they may have made some difference in, in preventing corruption, but it didn't go far enough, clearly, as we see, you know, with the recent 70 arrests.
And did you, so you wouldn't know actually if it slowed down, or how much it slowed down, any kind of work?
I mean, I haven't, you know, I haven't seen any data sort of tracking the timing between requests and implementation. That's just not something that, that we looked at in connection with this investigation, so I can't speak to that, no.
And then follow up on what I think Chair Brewer was asking about. I believe the one intention, nature of it was to make sure that people can get repairs much quicker. So when you envision, I guess, getting re-centralized, again, I think the objective was intentionally to not centralize it. Are you thinking about a, like a different unit specifically for this, or just going back to how it was a little bit more centralized before?
I mean, I think what we're thinking about is creating a centralized unit that would respond to the housing development's request for repairs promptly through picking vendors from a pre-qualified list. So we're talking about a different structure. It may have some resemblance to what was there before.
It may have some resemblance to what there before. Okay. So the recommendations that I saw in 2021 were really good. Do you believe, I do have to say, I am concerned about centralizing it, because I'm just concerned about the speed. So is it your contention that if the other four were adopted, do you still think we would be in this situation? If the other, all the other recommendations besides the centralization, would we still be in this situation?
Oh, you're saying if we didn't do the centralization, but we did the other thing?
Yes.
So first of all, even if we implemented all of these recommendations, right, it's very hard to predict, would, would we, would we, would we be in this situation? Hopefully not. We might be in some other situation, because that's sort of the way things work. So I don't, I don't want to say I know that if these recommendations had been implemented, we wouldn't be sitting here today, although I'm optimistic that we wouldn't, and I think they would have gone a long way to preventing the situation we're in. I do think that the centralization piece is important, because it adds an added layer of review and separation between the people who are dealing directly with the vendors and the approval process. And I think you do need that here. I think the pre-qualified list will help. I think the cost estimates will help. But I think what we've seen is continuing to have this authority reside in the housing developments really hasn't worked. There have been some changes put in place, but they haven't been sufficient.
And one of the recommendations, discuss review of all micro purchases. So my question is, is another layer of review much more regularly, obviously more than what's done now, can that work just as well, or you fully think that we have to re-centralize it to make it work?
Well, the audit review that we're describing, right, I think that's what you're referring to, that's an after the fact measure, right? So hopefully, that would catch problems at an earlier stage, but it won't entirely prevent them.
Hopefully, it will prevent if they knew the review was going to happen, or you can catch it much sooner than we caught it now. But I appreciate that. I just am concerned about centralizing and how long it's going to take. So I'm interested to see how long it took before the centralization, I mean, the taking away the centralization, how long it took after some of the recommendations, and how long it would take if you're re-centralizing. It makes sense, maybe, if there's another unit, but I am concerned. I liked all of the recommendations that were there. I wish they had adopted more of them, but I could see the centralization may be an issue. So just wondering if there's other review processes that can be put in place, maybe higher level folks that can make the decision that's not necessarily central, or multiple people making decisions, or something like that. But I am concerned, just if you go back to the system that way it was, it might slow down in a process that's already kind of rough to begin with. But thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Also now, let me recognize who's with us, Councilwoman Ayala. Thank you. Now, council members, are there any other members that have any questions for DOI? Okay. Councilwoman Stevens?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on, because I feel very similar to our public advocate around the time, because you did suggest that it would increase time and wait for repairs to happen, and that just is a little concerning to me, because obviously, we want recommendations, but there are already a lot of things that are already in place. And so I think in these instances, sometimes we then overcorrect, and then we are in a process where residents are waiting even longer, because currently, we know that the wait time for some repairs can take up to months. And so even with the new recommendations, can you talk to me a little bit about what is already, what was already being done that, that we didn't catch it? Because it also, when I was working at NICA, and I worked there for a number of years, when I worked in a community center, often you would have facilities, you have units in NICA where they have painters, or they had carpenters, but they were still contracting out. And so why wasn't that a trigger for, something just didn't seem right, that we were continuously contracting them out? And so other than the recommendations, what other things are we looking for? Because I think that there are some systems that's already in place that we already missed.
Well, certainly, I think the, the, the cost estimates is one, you know, thing that, that we could have been looking for, but, but we're not, right? That was one of the things that, that we recommended. I think what, what NICA did instead was to have additional training about corruption risks, to have additional checking of vendors. But I think that didn't, that didn't go far enough. So, you know, it's, it's, the way we looked at the situation, in a sense, the answer to your question in our view was, these were the additional changes that we needed. So, you know, they were requiring vendors to itemize exactly what work they were doing and what that work would cost. But that obviously wasn't enough to overcome the fact that, as alleged, you had housing development staff who were basically willing, you know, to, to engage in this misconduct with, with the vendors. And when you have a set of purchases that are not subject to review, because they fall under that $10,000 threshold, it's difficult to catch that sort of conduct, because you're never, you're never seeing an expense that's going above $10,000. Now, looking at data across NICA and seeing that a trivial purchase is, you know, six, seven, or eight thousand in one development, but much less in another, that could be a trigger. That could be data that could be looked at to identify a red flag. So there are, you know, there are things we could do to try to catch this conduct short of centralization. We, we recommend that, because based on what we've seen, that seems to be the most effective response.
Yeah, I mean, because, again, like, like, I think that those things are, oh, I'm not, I know my time is up, but I think that is very true, even in the sense of like, yes, we want to make sure that we're checking these things. But like, even I remember, they had a painting unit, but they contracted those things out. And so I just don't understand, like, there are things I feel like could have been in place that were triggers that we kind of just missed. And so like, even with the recommendations, yes, I think that they kind of make sense. And, and even the, some of the things that some of my colleagues said around, like, how are we using technology to kind of expedite these things so they can move in expeditious way, I think also needs to be considered. But I also think that there were things that we just kind of missed, because if there was a painting unit, like, I remember one time, we needed to get the community center painted, and I said, well, why can't we use the painting unit? Why can't we use your guys? They were like, no, we're just going to contract it out. And there was, and I know that they were micro purchases, but like, $6,000 is a lot for a painting job when you have a crew in, in the development that already does that. And so I think, you know, I don't want us to get to a place where we're overcorrecting, and then residents are waiting that much longer, and we're clogging up the process because we want to make sure it doesn't happen again, especially when there was always things, things that were in place that were triggers that we should have been looking at to make sure these weren't happening. Because to purchase anything in a city contract is already difficult. So adding more layers isn't going to catch it. I think it's when we're not paying attention. So I just wanted to make sure it was stated. Thank you.
I'm Adam Chair Brewer.
Thank you. One last question. So on the timing of all of this, so you, I don't think you necessarily know how long the investigation is going to take to deal with all the alleged. That's one question, is some guess to me. And then secondly, how, I mean, there's a lot to be done here, because just redoing the pre-qualified list will take time, et cetera. So I'm wondering what you think should be NICA's timeframe to accomplish all of this? And then finally, I know you mentioned putting more material up on the web, but what kind of other steps can we make this more transparent for the residents? This is a really big slap in the face for NICA and for the city and for government. You know, kudos to you and the U.S. Attorney for doing this, but it's really bad for those of us who care about government. So my question is, what else can we do to make whatever comes out of this positive, if there is such a thing, more transparent for the residents? They're really upset. They get, you know, you know what it takes to get a, a repair done with your ticket. And now, of course, they think everything that has happened to their lack of repairs is due to this. So I'm just wondering about the timing and transparency.
So in terms of the timing, what, what I understand from our conversations with NICA is that they're going to be implementing these on a rolling basis, but they expect to have them completed within a year. I mean, given the extensive recommendations that we're proposing, that seems like a reasonable timeframe. If it can be done more quickly, that's obviously better. I want to just note that, that we recognize within the recommendations document itself, that some of these will take more time to implement, and there are interim measures to prevent fraud before we can fully centralize the process. And so all of those are outlined here. In terms of investigative timeframe, which I think you mentioned, unfortunately, as I'm sure you expect, I can't give you any sort of timeframe. As the U.S. Attorney said, when the case was announced, the investigation is ongoing. Unfortunately, I can't give you any sense of when that's going to wrap up. And in terms of, of public transparency, I mean, it's part of the reason we wanted to make sure that these recommendations were issued and announced, you know, simultaneously with the case. Our recommendations are always public, but they're not necess, people aren't always necessarily looking at them, and we want to make sure that the public and especially the residents are aware that, you know, we and NICA are thinking about ways to make the process better. It's why we recommended that the audit findings be posted publicly. Obviously, proceedings like this draw attention to this issue, as does the case itself. I'm not sure that I have, that I have other, you know, ideas in mind, although there are lots of opportunities for city agencies, you know, to be communicating with the public and to be communicating with residents and, and, you know, giving, you know, giving information about how we're doing and implementing these recommendations is probably also something that, you know, would be helpful.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Chair Banks.
And now we're going to move to our NICA panel.
Good afternoon. If you all could, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
And if you could identify yourself, your title, and your name for the record, that would be great.
Sergio Panekay, Chief Procurement Officer for NICA.
Lisa Bova Hyatt, I'm NICA's Chief Executive Officer.
Brad Greenberg, the Chief Compliance Officer.
Daniel Green, Executive Vice President for Property Management Operations.
You may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Chairs Chris Banks, Julie Wan, Gail Brewer, members of the Committee on Public Housing, Contracts, and Oversight and Investigations, other distinguished members of the City Council, NICA residents, community advocates, public advocate, and members of the public, good afternoon. I am Lisa Bova Hyatt, NICA's Chief Executive Officer. I am pleased to be joined by Executive Vice President of Property Management Operations, Daniel Green, Chief Procurement Officer, Sergio Panekay, Chief Compliance Officer, Brad Greenberg, and other members of NICA's leadership team. Chair Banks, congratulations on your appointment. My colleagues and I look forward to working closely with you. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss this very serious and very disturbing charges of bribery against 70 current and former NICA employees in connection with micro purchase contracts. We learn from issues like this as we continue the intensive efforts to transform NICA as an organization, a mission that is fundamentally about better serving residents and improving their quality of life. First, I must emphasize that there is zero tolerance for wrongful and illegal activity at NICA. The individuals allegedly involved in these terrible acts put their greed first and violated the trust of their residents, their fellow NICA colleagues, and all New Yorkers. All of the implicated employees have been suspended. These alleged actions are counter to everything we stand for as public servants and will not be tolerated in any form. Over the past five years, NICA has achieved many significant milestones while remaining vigilant to ensure integrity in every area of our work. Today, I will discuss some of the transformative changes that we have already made to our business practices and those that are underway. We are committed to continue making the changes necessary as part of our holistic efforts to improve NICA and our service to residents. NICA's success depends on partnership, and we will continue to work with all of our law enforcement partners to rid the authority of any and all malfeasance. I would like to thank NICA's Inspector General, Ralph Iannuzzi, New York City Department of Investigations Commissioner, Jocelyn Strauber, U.S. Attorney for the Southern District of New York, Damian Williams, and their teams for their diligence in this investigation, their collaboration with NICA leadership, as well as their recommendations for improvement. All of us sitting here at this table, as well as our broader compliance and quality assurance teams, work closely with DOI and NICA's Inspector General, and for that, we are very grateful. Our teams identified suspicious activity, as well as a lack of controls in this area, and proactively sent information to DOI for review. We will, of course, continue collaborating with all of our partners as we put the necessary work to continue NICA's transformation. I would like to take a moment to discuss some of the work we have done over the past couple of years to improve the micro purchasing process at NICA. Following a prior investigation in September 2021, DOI made five recommendations regarding micro purchases. While NICA did not implement DOI's exact recommendations, DOI's findings provided the authority with the direction to undertake considerable incremental changes and improved internal controls to attempt to mitigate risk, while ensuring developments could provide efficient service to residents, especially when emergencies arise. To reduce reliance on micro purchases at the developments, NICA implemented substantial reforms to our procurement processes, which reduced spending on micro purchases for services by- by nearly half. Our collaboration with DOI on this effort has been a productive one. It involved implementing a set of procedural, training, and oversight changes to bring about this reduction in micro purchase spending for services at the developments. Some of our specific actions since September 2021 include contracting with Dun &amp; Bradstreet for integrity screening services for all vendors. Dun &amp; Bradstreet has provided organizations with valuable procurement process insights for nearly a century. Training our property management staff on micro purchases and ethics in late 2022 and early 2023. Rolling out a procurement ethics policy which all staff must acknowledge. Increased onsite monitoring visits and reviews of micro purchases by our compliance and quality assurance teams, which resulted in referrals to DOI. Entering into new large contracts that encompass services previously obtained via micro purchases to provide staff with alternatives to the micro purchase program. Issuance of prequalified vendor lists that could be used to select vendors in place of development staff selecting micro purchase vendors. Updating the micro purchase process with enhanced forms that require vendors to itemize costs and enhancing the micro purchase reporting requirement to increase transparency and accountability. Fundamentally, we believe that in order to best serve our residents, developments need an appropriate level of flexibility to be able to secure the fastest possible service for residents, particularly during emergencies. And government entities, including public housing authorities across the nation, as well as other city agencies, commonly use micro purchases to obtain critical services quickly. In addition to enabling developments to get smaller and lower cost repairs done expeditiously without undergoing a lengthy and complex procurement process, micro purchases support our MWBE and local hiring goals. DOI also recognized that we must focus on reform of the micro purchase process to protect it from abuse while maintaining efficient service for NICA residents. However, after this clear violation of trust and misuse of authority and as part of NICA's ongoing and collaborative efforts alongside DOI to reduce fraud and abuse of micro purchases, we are in the process of implementing DOI's full suite of 14 recommendations. All of DOI's recommendations have either been implemented or are underway. We expect to fully implement all 14 recommendations within a year. For instance, we are currently analyzing how our systems can be adapted to allow staff to upload additional documentation regarding micro purchases before payment is issued. We are creating additional prequalified lists of good, goods and service providers for use in lieu of micro purchase vendors. These prequalified vendors are required to undergo a vendor integrity review developed by NICA and DOI. We are augmenting training for staff and for micro purchase vendors. Micro purchases will continue to be reviewed by property management leadership and the compliance and quality assurance departments, and any irregularities will continue to be reported to DOI. The compliance and quality assurance departments will conduct semi-annual audits of micro purchase data and record keeping and will provide greater transparency and accountability into the authority's use of micro purchasing by posting the results of these audits on our website. We are also displaying signs in prominent locations at developments and property management offices, highlighting the prohibition of bribes and other criminal offenses, and are requiring staff and vendors to acknowledge the same in both paper and digital forms. And most critically, we are planning to implement an alternative staffing model for the micro purchase program. It will essentially separate the micro purchase request and approval process from developments, instead placing the review and approval responsibility with specialized staff with the necessary expertise. At the same time, we are examining ways we can ensure the prompt selection of vendors to do essential work quickly with less potential for abuse. While we work to enact these important structural changes as part of our larger organizational transformation efforts, there will be increased oversight of the micro purchase program. We believe that with the additional oversight and the implementation of DOI's latest recommendations, we can continue to tackle this issue and make progress, all in service to residents. Transformation at NICA is a sweeping endeavor that impacts every area of our organization, including operations and the management of our property portfolios, and is guided by our transformation plan. One of the key advancements of the past few years was the creation of NICA's first ever compliance, environmental health and safety, and quality assurance departments. As you have heard, the compliance and quality assurance teams are an essential part of our efforts to ensure that residents are benefiting from quality work performed in an ethical manner. These teams not only work closely with DOI, but they also include former DOI employees among their ranks. A compliance department unit that is dedicated to reviewing micro purchases employs a former DOI fraud investigator, and the Vice President of the Quality Assurance Department is a former Associate Commissioner at DOI. His staff includes two former DOI employees who help conduct investigations. Additionally, in 2022, NICA's Procurement Department hired a former DOI Senior Inspector General who was also previously an Assistant District Attorney to oversee the Procurement, Ethics, and Vendor Responsibility Department and strengthen the authority's vendor responsibility and integrity review process. The Procurement Department has also restructured the purchasing process to bring procurement closer to NICA neighborhoods and is strengthening its analytical capabilities to improve transparency into the micro purchase process. Better serving residents and improving their quality of life is at the heart of our endeavors. While we are dismayed by and will not tolerate the actions of any bad actors, we know that the vast majority of NICA employees show up every day to work hard and do right for our residents and for our city. It must also be stated that the issues we are discussing today reiterate the need for large-scale improvements driven by crucial housing preservation programs like the Trust and Pact, so we can reduce the need for constant Band-Aid fixes across our portfolio. These vital programs generate billions of dollars of funding to comprehensively renovate residents' homes while preserving their rights and protections, including permanently affordable rent. Change is also at the heart of our mission, especially given the decades of federal disinvestment besetting the authority. This change takes time, but it's happening, thanks in part to the support of partners like the Council and DOI. Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Let me just also recognize we have Councilwoman Williams who has joined us virtually and Councilwoman, Councilmember Verna Coff, who's in person. Thank you again. First of all, I want to know, can you walk us through the micro purchase process? How does that look? Can you walk us through the process? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much, Chair Banks. I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Procurement Officer Sergio Panike, who can walk you through the process.
Thank you. So when a program area, in this case, a particular development has a determination of need, at that point, then they establish those requirements and then go forward in identifying a vendor. That vendor then provides a quotation as well as an outline in the template that, the small purchase template, that outlines the labor, the supplies, the overhead and the profit that's required for that good. At that point, that's uploaded in a requisition into the system, and then that is routed to an approver, at which point then, once it's approved, it comes to central procurement, and central procurement looks for all of the sufficiency, including licensing and insurance and those other documents that I mentioned, and then the purchase order is cut, and then the development is, is free to proceed with the, with the vendor for the work that needs to be performed.
Okay. How long does it take for a superintendent, for it to get to a superintendent or a property manager to identify a need or solicit a contractor for a micro purchase contract?
I, I think that the, the factors would depend upon the particular development supervisor and the circumstances, but generally speaking, with the micro purchase process, within one to three days, a superintendent could determine the scope that's required for the services needed and a vendor to then provide those documentation, and then obviously the process that I just outlined.
And what's NICA's current policy on when a outside contractor, like those used in the micro purchase contract, should be used?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
What is NICA's current policy on when a outside contractor, like those used in the micro purchase contract, should be used?
Uh, I can, please.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to turn it over to Dan Green.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Banks, for that question. So the way it works is, at the property level, we have, we have really, you have two choices, really, at the property level, they can choose to go through our NICA skilled trades department or, which we have at NICA, we have plumbers, we have plasterers, we have painters, bricklayers, glaziers, we have eight skilled trades in, in operations. So, so, and they do the majority of the work in the apartments, but there's certain work, for example, especially around the grounds, fencing, certain, we have, we have a lot of equip, so we have very large grounds, so we have a lot of fences, we have a lot of pump equipment that we need in our mechanical areas, we have lobby doors, we have, we have doors in our, each of our stairwells. That type of work there is where, where we will, where we will turn to a vendor. For example, like if we need an apartment cleared out after somebody moves out and it's a lot of, like, I had one today, was a lot of stuff that, some questionable items in there, needed, you know, we didn't want our own staff to do it, so we, we bring in a vendor to do it, and it's a quick process to get this additional work done. Bottom line is, there's a lot of work at NICA, I totally appreciate, I love our skilled trades, I, you know, I work with them on a daily basis, but there's a lot of work at NICA, and we do need to rely on vendors to do a lot of that work. I do want to just note one other thing, micro purchases is one option available to our properties, but over the past couple of years, there have been, our procurement department has worked with operations to bring in IDIQ contracts that now cover a lot of the scope that micro purchases use to cover, so we've actually seen, and Mr. Panike can elaborate on this, a decline in micro purchases this, in 2023, as we rely on IDIQ contracts, which are competitively procured. So we, we have started, again, taking those steps, but there's, so there's more than one avenue available for us, for our, for our superintendents.
Okay. Who, outside of the superintendent or the property manager who solicits the micro purchase contract, reviews or orders to supply services or other needed listed micro purchases contract?
So for a micro purchase, and it can be done at the, it can be done at the property level in terms of the request and the approval, but it does have to go up to a central department to release the PO, and Mr. Panike can explain more.
I'm sorry, Chair, can you please repeat the question?
Yeah, well, who outside of the superintendent or the property manager who solicits the micro purchase contract, reviews or audits to supply? Who does the audit? Who, who, who reviews it?
It, it, well, it all, there's a number of different program areas that can obviously establish a requisition on determination of need and then, and then put forward that process. At the, at the, at the end of the process, once a vendor has performed, at that point, there's a statement of service that's generated and then a review of the work, and then there's a match between the invoice, the purchase order, and the statement of service in order for payment.
Okay.
And to your question about audits, I'm sorry, Brad Greenberg, our Chief Compliance Officer, sir, can answer that portion of the question.
Right, so as Sergio mentioned, there's a statement of service that gets done when the work is completed, which has to be reviewed by the property staff in order for payment to be issued. And one of the things that our department's done since 2020 is we have an onsite monitoring program where we go out to properties to look at a whole series of items. One of the items we look at is we pull recent requisitions and recent micro purchases, and we do a document review. We also interview property staff about the particular purchase, and we'll also go and do an inspection of the work that was performed, and we include that in our reports that we, that we issue to executive staff. We also did a project in 2022 following DOI's 2021 investigation where we looked at a couple dozen properties and vendors and did a, a kind of a holistic look at the program, where we also pulled hundreds of requisitions and looked at those, did the same kind of process where we interviewed staff, did a physical inspection of the work, and also looked at the documents that were supposed to be attached to the, to the micro purchase.
Also, I want to recognize Councilman Denowitz and Councilwoman, Councilmember Joseph. Now, what role does NICA's central office or any person above the development level staff take to the process of the micro purchase contracts?
We're, we have many different business units that are involved, from procurement to central office operations, and of course, compliance and quality assurance.
And how does, how does NICA, how do you track these micro purchase contracts?
So we track them in two ways. First, our Chief Procurement Officer can talk about the way that they track micro purchases, and then we should turn it over to our compliance unit who can talk about the way that they track them.
So specifically within our ERP system, our Oracle system is what we use for purposes of procurement, and all requisitions are entered into the system and managed through, from requisition to payment. And then as part of our reengineering over the course of the last two years, we've established a performance management unit that is, is seeing what the trends are for the purposes of micro and small and our requirements in order to more effectively manage our portfolio of contracts that we are making available to the developments.
Just to, there's also been a lot of data tools, I think someone asked about data analytics. So we, working with the procurement team, have developed a lot of tools to pull information out of the Oracle financial system, requisition by requisition, and look at trends. So we look at, you know, whether a particular vendor's being utilized relative to other vendors, whether there's a development that has a particularly high amount of spend, what their average spend is per micro purchase. And so when we did our, our review in 2022, we basically pulled down the information that way and ran some analytics against it and picked vendors and developments based on where we saw high averages, which is why one of the recommendations DOI put in their 14 recommendations was for compliance and quality assurance to kind of continue that process. So we have now monthly meetings with Dan and his team where we go over the analytics, the report, and we also go into, you know, individual data. So I think it's going to be a good tool we'll use in the future to identify where there's risk in the program.
Councilman Brewer has a follow-up.
I think one, I mean, I think that's all good, but what, obviously, there's been wildly inflated prices. So what is NICA doing to determine the scope of this ripoff, and can you attempt to obtain restitution for these crazy prices?
It's a, it's a great question, Chair Brewer. I think, you know, we, like I said, had identified this as an issue in the past, which is why we implemented some of the changes with procurement around a new template that would require our people to itemize, our staff to itemize their costs to limit overhead and profit. When we went out and talked to vendors, we also had seen inflated costs a couple of years ago. I think it's hard to go backward, I think we're trying to look forward. I can't speak to restitution, that would be a question with the U.S. Attorney's Office, but yeah, we're, we're definitely hoping to be able to control costs as somebody is controlled.
I can actually speak to the restitution speak, piece. I have spoken with our Inspector General and I have spoken with our inspector general and I have asked him to speak with the US Attorney's Office and to the extent that we can be, we will be seeking restitution not only from vendors who have overcharged NYCHA, but also from our employees who have been, you know, people who have put their greed above the needs of NYCHA and our residents.
Congratulations. And one other follow-up to that, vendors who, one, micro contracts are charged sometimes the same amount, you know, close to the 5,000 or the 10,000, as we heard earlier, cutoffs for dramatically different goods and services. And I think, and I asked this of DOI, some vendors on NYCHA's current pre-qualified list have a documented track record of doing this. So what are we going to do, what's NYCHA going to do to reexamine the current pre-qualified? And I know that what we heard from DOI was it's going to, and you mentioned it also, Dunham Bradstreet, so on, is that happening? Is it all done? Are you redoing the entire list, et cetera?
So Sergio can speak to that.
I love Sergio, I know Sergio.
If I may, Councilmember Brewer, the pre-qualified lists that we've established were for the purposes of dealing with some of the challenges that we had with some of our requirements around sealed bids, lowest price and those challenges. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that because while we're now establishing the pre-qualified lists based on certain competencies, and for example, the one in particular that was in the article, you know, that the carpentry list requires experience for five years, a DOB license, provide five references, three projects and so forth, that particular vendor had gone through the VNC process nine times. So the review from both DOI, VNC check, they have a passport filing and all of those things, they were also an S3BC, a section three business concern back into 2020, they're not, right now, they're not a section three business concern based on the new rules. We are looking at those orders, they were upwards of 700 and some odd purchase orders going back to, I believe, 2015. And as of, as of 2024, there are no purchase orders. In 2023, there were 10 tile contracts, but we'll work with, with our partners in compliance and, and DOI and so forth on that particular. But pre-qualified list, generally speaking, is a good way to establish the competencies and the capabilities that we need in our vendors and then create a pool from which we can carry from micro to small to larger contracts in a way that we can actively manage our vendor base. The DOI recommendations only aid us in that regard in being able to now take vendor integrity at the onset of that pre-qualification process. So we started that prequal process around two years ago in establishing what those scopes and those requirements were and now we'll carry it forward, not, again, not only at the micro level, small, but then also in the large contracts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wong.
Thank you so much, Chair Banks. Chair Banks has asked most of the procurement questions that I wanted to ask, but could you please clarify the relationship between NYCHA and MOCs and what the difference is between your relationship with other city agencies? Because today, I know that MOCs did not attend because NYCHA does not fall into their portfolio and you have your own procurement roles.
Thank you for that question, Chair Wong. Sergio Panikke will answer it.
So specifically, NYCHA's governed by both federal and state requirements, 2 CFR 200 and the PHL 151, we are not subject to the PPM nor the relevant provisions within the city charter in regards to procurement.
Because we're not a city agent.
Like other city agents.
Because we're not a city agency.
Yes. And for your, for your procurement process for micro purchasing, can you walk us through the differences between what NYCHA's procurement rules are versus the city? What are the, how do they differ, if any?
I, I wish I would have the city's rules. You know, so the city's micro purchase limit is 20,000 for general micros, I believe it's 35,000 for construction. And then, as has been mentioned before, there's vehicles such as negotiated acquisition and, you know, and other means to, to contract. NYCHA is very prescriptive, it's 10,000 for micros, 250,000 for the small acquisition method, and that also includes MWBE where, you know, the city has a million and a half for MWBE. But those are the, the large variances.
Okay. And earlier in the testimony, we heard that the employees have been suspended, the ones that were implicated. Can you confirm or deny that the employees are still receiving a salary from NYCHA?
Currently, the suspended employees are on, suspended without pay.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And what was the total number of micro purchases per contractor in fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23?
Sergio Panikke will answer that question.
So there were, in to, 2023?
22 and 23.
So in 2022, there were a total of 13,883 purchase orders to the tune of $74,195.618. In 2023, there was a total of 16,771 purchase orders in the amount of $60,268,102.
And what was the total number of unique contractors who received micro purchases in fiscal year '22 and '23?
So the unique vendor count for 2022 was 948 and in 2023 was 766. And that is both commodities as well as services.
And do we know between those two fiscal years, how many of them may be implicated that have not been part of the investigation yet? Because we know from the, from the press that not everyone out of the 70 were actually implicated, that there is most likely more.
We do not have that, an answer to that question.
Okay. In the NYCHA procurement policy manual bid splitting, that is breaking up the contract to avoid competitive bidding, not allowed, but using separate micro contracts to facilitate MWBE goals or for geographic reason, that is allowed. Can you help us understand how many, how is that distinction laid out in the policy for superintendents? And how does NYCHA Central make sure that micro contracts for the same or similar work that are being used for the correct goals and not for bid splitting purposes?
Can you repeat the question? I think we didn't follow the full question. You said the procurement, go ahead, go ahead.
So in the NYCHA procurement policy manual bid splitting, that is breaking up a contract to avoid competitive bidding, not allowed, but using separate micro contracts to facilitate MWBE goals for geographic reasons, how is that distinction laid out in policy for superintendents? Earlier, we had asked the question about training for superintendents as well on micro purchases? And how does NYCHA Central make sure that micro contracts for the same or similar work that are being used for the correct goals and are not for bidding purposes?
I think, so just to, your question basically is how do we distinguish between bid splitting, which is not permitted, versus MWBE contracting?
Mm-hmm, for your MWBE goals.
So in regards to bid splitting within the PPM, that is conduct that should not occur and through our ethics training process, we made that very clear. And as, also within our, when we established the procurement policy manual in 2021, that was part of the acknowledgements that we also required as staff. Just to make sure that I understand correctly, what, in regards to the MWBE, we did establish an MWBE first policy in 2021 that we require developments to first seek MWBEs or section threes before seeking out a non-MWBE. So I think those are two different parts of the procurement policy manual.
Okay, and I think earlier you testified that you were using Oracle ERP for tracking your micro purchases, correct?
All, all requisitions, all purchases within the system.
Okay, so as of today, does Oracle, NYCHA's Oracle system automatically flag micro purchase quotes for repeated services on the same day or over a period of time?
Oracle doesn't necessarily flag that, but we are creating data tools and working collaboratively with compliance and with operations to establish those sorts of reviews on, now on a monthly basis.
Okay, so it wasn't being done previously?
The, the, the tools don't sit in Oracle, right? We're pulling data out of the Oracle system and putting them in dashboards for analytical purposes so we can see particular requisitions on particular days and be able to filter that way. It's like an analytical tool.
Are you building your, so you, NYCHA is building internal dashboards in-house?
Some of them have already been built, but yes, they're in-house.
Okay, to aggregate all the data? And for the dashboards that you're currently using, what is the gap in the NYCHA system that prevents it from tracking abuses and mismanagement of funds at the micro level? I guess the answer to that is that it wasn't being tracked previously.
I think a lot of this has been built in the last couple of years. This is something that we've been focusing on now for a few years. Like, like Sergio mentioned, he, he's hired staff to do performance management, which has been very helpful. We have data scientists in the compliance department as well and folks that work with data a lot. So this has been an ongoing effort for the last few years to kind of build that capability.
And I think we should be clear that we observed, our compliance and quality assurance units observed in 2021 that there were risks associated with the micro purchase program and that caused our own internal departments, our compliance department, to do a deep dive into micro purchases. We prepared a report that was shared with DOI, issued a compliance advisory alert that went out to every single NYCHA employee, updated our micro purchase protocols and put safeguards in place. Because of those things that happened in 2022, we saw a dramatic decrease in the amount of money spent on micro purchases for services. Oh, we can't hear her.
Oh, sorry, I'm not allowed to unmute myself. Thank you. And for your current system, do you have any plans to have a public dashboard so that the public can also follow along for transparency and auditing and accountability purposes?
Absolutely, and I'm going to turn it over to Brad Greenberg, who will talk about what we're going to do, which is one of the 14 recommendations that DOI provided to us.
Yeah, so one, one of the recommendations is, I think that Commissioner spoke about earlier, is there'll be a public report that will be added to our website on a six-month calendar cycle that will include data analytics on spend and also our performance against record-keeping requirements in the samples that we pull, as well as our progress on the recommendations. And this is modeled on things we've done in the past in other areas as well.
And Brad, could you also talk about the transparency that we already have on our website, that we've already had built out?
We do have a lot of transparency on our website around multiple areas in the HUD agreement, as well as outages, dashboards and other items too, that we're happy to always walk you through, council member.
Okay, because the report is great, but if we could have a real-time dashboard that is also public-facing so that, so that especially our NYCHA residents, our tenant association, constituent service caseworkers can look up cases in real time and really understand and follow along in the procurement process of where their current work order is or where the purchase is. And before I turn it back to Chair Banks, do vendors for micro purchasing contracts go through a passport check currently?
Our chief procurement officer will answer that question. Thank you.
They do not go through a passport check at this point. Through the DOI's recommendations, we will be making, we will be doing a vendor integrity check that will mirror much of the passports, certifications and representations. At this point, once a vendor reaches $250,000 is when we do do a full-blown passport vendor check. I will say that as we did the analysis for our commodities and our top 20 commodities and top 20 services vendors, most of those, 20 out of 20 on the commodities and 18 of 20 on the services, did have a valid VNC. So many of our micro, our micro purchase vendors do have VNC checks.
Okay. Thank you so much. Back to you, Chair Banks.
Chair Brewer.
Thank you very much. Three questions. First of all, just, I know we talked about some of the numbers, but what is NYCHA's current repair backlog? That's one. And then, how many vacancies, because this is related, I think, does NYCHA have for the following job titles, property manager, superintendent and assistant superintendent? And then, I assume there are some vacancies, so who's filling them? And then, can you explain how you review the job performance of supervisors and assistant supervisors and how the staff evaluations changed due to the recent scandals?
Thank you for those questions, Chair Brewer. I'm going to turn it over to Dan Green, who's going to walk you through first, your first question.
The backlog, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. So can do a deep dive into the, I love talking about the work orders, I can do a deep dive into the backlog. The backlog is high, but it's complicated and I just want to just give some context first. So last month alone, we saw 229,000 work orders created at NYCHA, just in one month. The month before that, we had over 200,000 work orders created. The month before that, we had 211,000 work orders, so on and so forth. So every single month, we're getting a very high volume of work that we have to do. I will say proudly for our, for what I supervise, I supervise maintenance, I supervise lead, I supervise mold and I supervise all the skilled trades for all the properties, we are meeting our monthly burden for, for what is coming in. And that is a really good thing. We've been really pushing, and I think the neighborhood model that we moved through, the transportation, the transformation plan, along with the additional staffing, is helping us meet that benchmark for our in-house work orders. Where we have challenges is with getting to the backlog during COVID, I think we crested. So we, just to get into overall numbers, in May 2023, we crested at, and this is for all work order types, including for heating, for elevators, 650,000 in May 2023. Today, we're down to 584,000. So just in the past 10, 10 months, and that was at the end of January, we've been able to really bring that work order backlog down. And one of the main ways that we've done that is targeting the most critical work orders. We've gone after leaks, old leaks, we've gone after old mold remediation, we've gone after things called tub enclosures, which are in our bathrooms, which cause leaks.
Yep.
And through those concerted efforts, it's, we've been able to bring that backlog down. And I would note that we worked on the, with the BIAS monitors to develop those criteria to target our backlog. Because the bottom line is not all work orders are created equal, some, a lot of the old work orders are paint work orders. And that, that's, it's really paint after repair. And right now, we simply don't have enough NYCHA painters or vendors to be able to cover all of the painting that, work orders that have been created. So we're targeting areas where health and safety is paramount, where resident quality of life is paramount, and we are seeing, number one, us meeting that monthly throughput and number two, so that the backlog does not grow. And number two, we want to target that, those backlog work orders in those most sensitive areas. And I can say, for example, in Manhattan alone, we've dramatically reduced the number of plumbing work orders open in Manhattan. I'll just pull up the numbers just quickly here, because I think that they are illustrative of some of the work that we're doing. It's cooperating, so. But for plumbing alone in Manhattan, at the height, in July 2022, we had 6,750 plumbing work orders open in, in Manhattan. That was, that was the crest. Actually, it was a little bit higher the month before, 6,814. As of today, we have 3,626 work, plumbing work orders open in all of our Manhattan, Manhattan developments. And that's with over 1,600 plumbing work orders being created every single month. So we're bringing, so we're actually getting to our plumbing work a lot faster now. And we see similar trends in, in, in the trades. But I give a long answer because work order data, sometimes we see the number and people say, oh my goodness, that's the worst. It's actually, actually, we have to be very smart about it and use our resources very strategically and again, make sure that we're, we're not adding to that backlog and strategically bring it back.
I appreciate that. You say, because plumbers, you just don't have, I mean, painters, you just don't have enough painters, is that what you?
Yeah, and we are, we are, so one thing that was, we're going to be doing is, we're going to trans, we're going to be moving some painters that were in a central department back out to our boroughs. They were, they were pulled centrally to deal with some of the, really, a lot of lead issues back a few years ago. Now that we have a full-blown abatement program, we're moving those resources back out to the boroughs. So we really, our painter backlog is coming down too, but not as quickly as, as things like plumbing. So we want to, we want to add those resources to our neighborhoods to be able to do more paint work orders. We also started this year a project called Operation Paint the Town, which is still evolving, but basically, we're going after those very old vendor paint work orders. So our Nycha painters, they only get assigned to do two rooms or fewer, and then vendors are assigned to do full apartment painting. That's the way that the work has been divided for Nycha for many, many, many years. But we're, so we really want to target those older full apartment paint work orders. Number one, to see if the work is still needed, because sometimes the residents might just say, I'm going to paint the apartment myself. Or maybe, maybe they actually, it was created for another reason, and they actually don't need a vendor work order. So we're doing verification, but then we also want to get that work done. I would note that, that's really not micro purchase work. We have paint contracts and things of that nature, maybe a couple of micro purchases here and there, but mostly it's through paint contracts. But again, strategic targeting of critical areas is essential to bring that backlog down.
Thank you. And then vacancies?
Yeah, let me just find it. I have all those numbers, I just got to pull it up in this.
I have it handy.
Oh, you have it handy, please.
Yeah, just viewer. So currently, we have 15 property managers that are vacant, eight superintendents, 25 assistant and superintendents, all but 10 have candidates starting on May 4th or sooner. And as you can imagine, we were fortunate to be able to work collaboratively with DOI. So once we knew the titles that were needed, our HR department has really been working to get these vacancies filled.
Okay. And then, have you changed the staff evaluations based on what's the scandal? That's my last question.
I, I welcome more ability to evaluate our staff. Right now, those rules are pretty prescriptive due to some of the, some of the contracts that Nycha has negotiated over time. There's really, you know, just a provisional period that we have that opportunity. We need more evaluations. I can say that myself, I'm at a Nycha property every single day, literally for an entire day. So we are assessing staff, we're making moves where we see the staff falling short on, on quality of work, performance, et cetera. But we do, I do support a more structured evaluation process at Nycha, and hopefully we can get there one day.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to go to committee members' questions. We're going to start with Council Member Rivera.
Thank you so much to the chairs for, for this important hearing. Of course, I want to thank the panel. It's unfortunate that we are here to discuss the largest single-day bribery-related takedown in DOJ history. It's just baffling, the level of dysfunction. So my district is home to nearly 20,000 residents across 16 developments, and these are the families that are dealing directly with the consequences of this corruption. The examples of how this scandal has affected families' quality of life, there are plenty, as you can imagine. In my development, we've seen workers at Gompers, Wald, LES houses, and Strauss among those indicted. Gompers has recurring issues with broken doors that Nycha says they fix. It makes me wonder whether that was one of the smaller contracts involved in this. And Wald, I had a senior live for nearly a year with a massive hole in her wall exposed to pests and particulate, particulates. The dust, when I went into that apartment, was, was palpable. The purpose of the no-bid contracting process, as was stated many times, is to speed up repairs. But Nycha's internal data shows that at the end of January 2024, there are 600,000 open work orders taking 370 days to resolve them. Can you say that this, this bribery, this corruption, this particular scandal adversely affected work order completion and repair resolutions? Can you honestly say that?
Thank you so much for that question. I'm going to turn it over to Dan Green, who spends every day in the field and can speak about both the work orders and your question.
So I, the way that you, I don't, I don't, I think the answer is no. I don't, I don't agree with that. First of all, we're seeing right now, if you look at the data, which is massive, more of our work orders than ever before are being closed with work done with actual labor than in the past. In the past, Nycha did have the issue, and it's a very disturbing issue of closing out work orders without visiting apartments. But we put so many controls in place now to make sure that right now, I think it's at like four, around 4%. It changed, you know, goes up and down monthly a little bit, but 4% are being closed due to not accessing apartments. So we're getting in, we're doing more work. The work that the micro purchases, and I went through in preparation for this testimony, like literally every single micro, micro purchase, most of it's like public space area work. So some of it, so there's a few in apartments, but most of it is going to be things like fencing is a big item here, lobby doors. And you're right, our lobby doors do break, and it's incredibly frustrating. It's one of the most frustrating problems. Every time we fix them, unfortunately, they're breaking again and again and again. We need to fix that problem. It's a serious safety issue. But those are the types of repairs that we see mainly for micro purchases. There's also a lot of pump work, like, like in terms of, like, in our, in our mechanical areas, we'll have pumps that remove water from areas to make sure they don't flood, or we have our house pumps that supply water to the development. So that's generally the kind of work that we're talking about. So I don't think that the type of work here slowed down any repair times. We do have slow repair times that we need to speed up, and I fully acknowledge that. And through work order form, I think that we're, we're starting to do that. But, but I don't think that this particular issue implicated the repair times.
If I have just one more question, is that okay? Okay. So I, I hear you, and I heard some of the reforms that you're making to the no-bidding contract process. You said most of them are implemented or underway within the next year. So we heard a little bit of issuance of pre-qualified vendor lists, enhancing the reporting requirements. I think we would appreciate a more detailed timeline of when these things actually went into effect, and what is expected in the next year, and maybe you can get the committee that afterwards. But just my last question is really, in light of the DOJ investigation, what concrete steps will Nycha take to hold employees accountable for the safety of their residents?
Thank you for that question. I'm going to turn it over to our chief compliance officer, who can answer those questions in detail.
If you'd like, we can go recommendation by recommendation and give you a current status now, or we can defer that. It's up to you, council.
Well, just give us something.
Okay. So for the first recommendation, which is the alternative staffing model, that's obviously, as the DOI Commissioner alluded to, the most complicated. We don't obviously want to impact service, so we have to roll that staffing model out. That's the longer-term recommendation the DOI gave us, as is the second one, which is the longer-term procedural changes. So the way they structured their recommendations is that the first two are the longer ones, longer-term ones, which will hopefully happen within the year, like we said. And then three through 14 are underway now. So for number three, which is a training, that's an item that we're currently working on, and we have the training materials with DOI, and we're going back and forth on the materials, and we'll hopefully roll out the training shortly. We've done prior training, so this is an additional training. Number four is complete. That was the compliance advisory alert that came from my office, reminding folks about their duty to report corruption. That went out already. Number five is about the creation of a pre-qualified list, which Sergio can talk to, but that's already being discussed with DOI, and they have a plan in place to complete that hopefully soon. Number six is to create a training program for our vendor community, not just for our staff. Also something that's currently underway, and they're working through the material now, using some of the material we used in the prior two years. Number seven is the establishment of a schedule of cost estimates for the top 15 most-used services. For those, we've already been pulling data, even prior to the arrest, we've been working on something similar to this. We've been pulling data to figure out what the most common types are, so we could try to come up with a better schedule of cost estimates. And we have the data underway, and I've been doing that analysis, so hopefully that'll happen soon as well. Number eight is to have regular meetings between myself, Dan, and our quality assurance officer, to use a data analytics tool that we've built, to try to go through individual properties and individual requisitions, and then do reviews of those. And we started, we kicked off those monthly meetings already, so that's complete. And we've scheduled the rest of them for the rest of the year, and it'll be a good, I think, way for us to have executive oversight over, over the program. Number nine is related to the staff using the, the schedule of cost estimates, and also, if they're not having, if they have a statement of, and, sorry, it's about statement of services, before-and-after photos being uploaded. So that's going to require an IT enhancement to Oracle Financial, and so we're working with our staff to put that in place. It's obviously a little more complicated to code, but we're working on that one. 10 was about the display of signage, which I think we had a couple of developments that needed to put their signs up yesterday, but I believe is complete. And those last two had to send photos to us, and I think they did. We can follow up on that one. Basically, everybody has their signage up. Number 11 was about a pop-up window or a set of language going on to the Oracle Financial system for each requisition that tells people that they have to acknowledge that offering or giving a bribe is, is not permitted. That went live already in our system, so that one's complete. And we had communications go out. Number 12 was about revising the form that we rolled out a couple of years ago to also have that same acknowledgement. That one's complete. We've got that on our website and also in our internal systems to require that language be checked off on our forms. Number 13 is about the semi-annual reporting that we'll do, which obviously, we'll do our first semi-annual report in the next couple of months as we, as we scale it up. And then number 14 is to continue our ongoing reporting to DOI of suspicious activity, which is obviously ongoing. So we've made a lot of good progress already.
And I can confirm that the signage is complete.
Good.
Well, thank you to the chairs. You have a procurement ethics policy, which all the staff must acknowledge. I hope the repercussions of violating that policy is also clear. Thank you for this, for the time.
Councilmember Stevens?
Good afternoon. Thank you to the chairs for this really important hearing, and I just have a couple of questions. And just starting with thinking about, I know we've taken recommendations from DOI about what we need to do to kind of like fix the corruptions, but I haven't heard anything about how you've engaged residents to see and get their input as well. I would love to hear what that process would look like, and how you're using Nycha leadership, you know, the TA leaders, to be a part of this process, and why weren't they a part of the process if they weren't before?
Thank you so much for that question. I can tell you that we all routinely speak to TA leaders and resident advisors. The day that this happened on February 6th, myself and our chief operating officer, Eva Trimble, sent out a letter both to our staff as well as our residents. We also had our EVP for resident engagement call each of the TA leaders to speak to them about it. I, you know, I personally called several of them as well. Of course, when they have something to share with us, we engage with them. I think some of them were just as surprised as we were, but we will continue to speak with them. We have regularly scheduled calls with both the C-COP and other TA leaders.
Again, that's nice, and I know you speak with them often, but that's part of the issue, right? Because you're talking to them, but you have recommendations, but where are their recommendations, right? These are people who are living there and who are actually directly affected. And so part of the issue is they should be part of this conversation around, like, when we're talking about these recommendations, and maybe thinking about how we implement, you know, I know there were some talks about like pictures and things like that, but how are we making sure we're doing 360 evaluations of the work that's being done and having them be included? And I think that that is a layer that we are missing in this process when we're talking about it, because, like I said before, I think that it is important to have accountability, but in these moments, we often over-correct, and we make the process longer. And even in this conversation, residents are missing from it. And so I'm really concerned that there are not people also making recommendation. And I would have loved to hear, you just listed, what, like 15 recommendations? Not one of them was from a resident. So that needs to be a part of the conversation. So as we are going through this process, not only telling them what the recommendations are, because I know that's a lot what we do in the city, we tell folks, and, but like having real input in them being part of the process to kind of help alleviate some of this moving forward, I think is going to be really important. And could you talk to me a little bit about what you guys are doing to really restore the trust in residents? As you guys know, Nycha residents, this is just adding on to the list of reasons why they are always upset, right? And so really, what does the outreach look like to kind of restore the trust? Because especially with the superintendents, these were people who were there day in, day out. And so this has broken a level of trust. So what are you guys doing to also help repair that trust with residents in Nycha? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I don't know, Dan, you want to talk, you know, we've all gone out to developments, spoken both to the staff who are equally affected, as well as the residents, who, you know, some of them just couldn't believe, you know, what they were hearing. But we continue to, continue to have a dialogue with them. And Dan, I don't know if you want to speak to, to what we do as well?
Yeah, I mean, I struggle with it every single day, because you're right, the residents have a lot of reasons to be frustrated with us still. And I think what I can say is the, the solution to that is getting the work done and getting it done well. And communication, I agree with you 100% that I, I speak with tenant association presidents every single, every single day, pretty much throughout this city. And they want to see, number one, their, their work done for the issues that they care about, and they also want to see it done in a timely fashion, as you noted. Broken doors, one of the top complaints, super frustrating that, that we have a broken door and it takes so long to get a vendor out there.
I know. I literally just had a TA email me about a broken door right now, so.
Yeah, I, I believe, I, I probably have 100 of those emails in my, in my email inbox right now. And we have to do better with our vendors, and our vendors have to be accountable, not just on things such as corruption, but also time of service. You know, we shouldn't have door vendors have to delay trips out to our apartment, out to our developments to get lobby doors fixed. So that, we need to have, provide better, more time-sensitive service. But I agree with you, we also need to talk with them about ideas for vendors. I know that we've talked about some type of survey for quality of work, particularly on things like painting or plastering, where they might be doing work in the apartment, to make sure that tiling is another area that we need to consider. But I think we have started to achieve some programs that are, you know, I run the lead abatement program. We've relocated now over 4,000 residents to hotels. We're getting work done on their apartment. And though not every resident has been happy, I do think that we've listened about how we're scoping that program, how we're making it on the resident's schedule. And, and programs such as that are, I think are going to lead to hopefully better resident feedback and better resident experience overall.
And just really quick, I have another question. Are you guys using like newsletter, do you guys like have a newsletter infrastructure, something that you're sending out to residents? And if so, how often are you sending it out? Because I'm literally getting texts right now about that. And so just trying to get a better understanding of what that would look like, as far as like your, your, do you like do call blasts or newsletters for updates and things like that with your resident in Nycha currently?
With the resident associations specifically?
No, I'm just residents in general.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, sometimes people think maybe too much communication from Nycha to residents on certain issues. So we have, well, our robocalls, our robocalls, robocalls is one of the areas that we, that people maybe get a little bit annoyed at. But, but no, I think on critical issues. But I would say there's a lot of different layers of communication through our, through our engagement apartment, department from meetings, which has the meeting that Chair Banks and I were at about a few weeks ago about Legionella, to come to TA meetings, to doing special meetings, to updating them regularly by phone. We make sure that our neighborhood administrators are checking in with our neighbor, with our, with our tenant association presidents very frequently to make sure that they are updated on any sort of recent development at Nycha, but also any needs that they have. And then also, I think, just through our continuous resident outreach, we are doing a lot of that, but we can always get more word out there. We can always do a better job to make sure everybody's informed on what's going on at Nycha.
And I just want to add that our RISB unit does send out a weekly newsletter, and they also meet with the C-COP every Thursday.
And just thinking about, as we're talking about the recommendations, even the ones that you just listed here, maybe sending them out in this weekly newsletter to get feedback from residents could be a start to also have a line of communication of what we can do. But I, like I said, I just want to stress that the importance of making sure that we're not only listening to DOI, but we're also listening to the residents, because I say it all the time, the people closest to the issues are probably the one with the solutions. And so making sure that they are valued and a part of the discussion moving forward about any recommendations, and not just telling them what we're going to do, but actually getting their feedback and input and listening and taking it and implementing it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Abacher?
Hi.
Hi. Can you explain how NITRA evaluates the job performance of supers, property managers, and assistant supers in the campuses?
Thank you, Councilmember. We actually addressed that earlier with Chair Brewer, but Dan Green can go over the challenges with us doing that again.
Yeah, so, so some, like right now, like when a super is first assigned, there'll be a probationary period where they can be evaluated during that probationary period, but it's a very short time. It's like a year to evaluate them. Unfortunately, if a super gets into that role, or fortunately or unfortunately, depending on the person, there's not too much of an evaluation process after that. We do have to rely on our disciplinary process, which we can issue memos called instructional memos. Those can be escalated to something called a counseling memo, which are like very issue-specific, like if, for example, if you didn't follow a procurement policy, you could get a counseling memo and that would go into your file. If you get enough counseling memos, that would then go to what they call a local hearing, which is a hearing administered by the boroughs. Or if it's serious infraction, we will pursue a general trial, which you can get suspension or termination or demotion through the general trial. But the civil service laws make discipline at NITRA very challenging. And some of the agreements about employee valuation, whether it be with the unions or through the civil service, have also made it very challenging. I, again, really, you know, in my role as the, as overseeing property management, I really want to have the ability to evaluate, because we hear really negative feedback also from residents, from residents who have very negative experiences in our property management offices, and that's not acceptable. So I really, you know, look forward to a day when we could have more rigid evaluation system on a frequent basis for our superintendents, assistant superintendents, and property managers.
Are you pursuing some kind of more rigid evaluation system? Because I think my colleagues could share similar experiences, and I don't want to overgeneralize with every property manager, but the, the, the experience that we have when we go to a property manager at NITRA with issues and the experience we have when we go to a superintendent in a privately operated building, they're often very different.
I think some of our property, many of our property managers are excellent, and many of our superintendents are excellent. Unfortunately, some are not. And I agree with you that we need a structured system to be able to evaluate them better. I ask for that as a manager. But I would also say, a lot of the work that we've been doing at NITRA over the past few years is updating NITRA. NITRA really needs an update overall in its procurement policies, its environmental policies, in another, an area is on employee oversight. Because, for example, when I was at work for the city and other agencies, I got evaluated twice per year. And I was like, you know, in a different kind of job. But that kind of dialogue with an employee currently does not exist, but I think it needs to.
And Councilmember, to the extent that you have an issue with a property manager or super, please let us know so that we can address it. Chair Banks, I just want to correct something that I had said earlier with respect to our current vacancies. Chair Brewer, I had said that we currently had 15 vacancies for property managers. Actually, the numbers were updated this morning, and it's, we currently have eight vacancies. And with respect to superintendents, I had said we had eight vacancies. We actually have nine vacancies.
Let me just, some other, any other members? Council, Chair Brewer, you have any other questions?
One quick question, following up to Councilmember Botcher's question. The fact is that you want more supervision. Is that something that is contractual? Is it, can it be done just with an executive order? How do you get more supervision?
Collective bargaining.
It is collective bargain, that's what I want to know. So that all of the positions that you're talking about are collectively bargained? It's like you have to do it that way? When is the next contract, though?
We'll have to get back to you on that one.
Exactly.
How many referrals have you forwarded to DOI? That's, I guess, the final question.
I don't know if we have the exact number of referrals. We are in communication with them all the time on this program and others, so I'm not sure we have the exact number for you. We'll have to get back to you.
I just want to make an additional correction that the C-COP meeting is once a week on Thursdays, but the newsletter that RISB sends out is monthly, not weekly.
Thank you. Are there any rules surrounding contractors which are owned by or employee or retired or past NITRA employees? Any rules that, that surround contractors as far as, which are owned by an employee or retired employee or past NITRA employee?
I don't have that information in front of me. I believe that they would have to go to COIB to get a waiver, but I don't want to misspeak, so we can get back to you on that.
How do you, how do you verify the contractor or the vendor? If they have any ownership or interest? What does the vetting process look like?
I will turn that over to our chief procurement officer for that answer.
So given, given the recommendations from DOI, this will be changing. They'll be part of the vendor integrity. Process will also include any sort of ownership requirements, corporate structure, related parties, and things of that nature at the micro level, basically anybody doing business with NITRA. But prior to that, that's part of the VNC process, the vendor name check passport process. You submit a passport filing, and with that passport filing, you're required to disclose your certifications and representations as far as how you're structured, related parties, related companies, and what have you. And then that then goes forward, and DOI then does a vendor name check and then provides us with a memo to anything that may be of discriminatory nature.
Okay. And what type of trainings are done for the property managers, the superintendents, and the assistant superintendents on how they manage the micro purchase contracts?
So there's a number of different trainings within our Oracle system and our website, things that we've developed over the last couple of years. And then again, with respect to our ethics policy and our Dunn &amp; Bradstreet two policy and a tool, we have a training that we developed. We initiated that in November of '22, and now we will be implementing that within our learning management system as a result of the DOI recommendation.
All right, thank you. In 2024, the budget plan for NITRA includes reducing central office costs and headcounts. In order to control the cost amid NITRA's ongoing operating deficit, DOI's recommendation appears to require a new centralized unit. What's the cost estimated for that unit, and is it funded by NITRA's budget?
We haven't finalized the staffing yet, but the model that we're currently looking at is going to cost about $6.1 million.
And I guess we'll, if there are no any other questions, this will be my last question. What additional resources, if any, does NITRA need for the city council or administration to implement enhanced fraud prevention measures in its micro purchase contracting process?
Well, we really appreciate your partnership. You know, we'll be coming back in, I guess, two weeks to talk about our preliminary budget so we can have a more robust answer then. But, you know, with any change like this that we need to implement, we certainly need, you know, the support of our council members, obviously the public advocate, and also DOI. We need to be collaborative. We need to make sure that any bad actors are rooted out. You know, I've been a lifelong public servant. What happened here can't happen again. So thank you.
All right. And I guess this will be my last question. The U.S. Attorney categorized the culture of corruption that enabled these alleged actions. Beyond improving the contracting process, what steps can NITRA take to reform its organizational culture and win back the trust of the residents? Because, you know, the residents have been scorned behind us, and we need some fundamental steps moving forward to bring back that trust. So what organizational reforms are being done?
Thank you so much for that question, and I think it's a perfect question to end the hearing. Our transformation plan, you know, we've been under federal monitor since 2019, and our transformation plan focuses on achieving compliance through a culture of service. We have really tried to focus on training. We have an amazing new morning muster project that gets people at the developments, you know, people who don't normally have access to computers. We have an operations leadership institute where we're using former supers, assistant supers, and property managers who have retired to teach best practices to individuals who are coming into these jobs. We have a coaching and mentoring leadership academy. And continued communications to make sure that we are sending a message down from the top that these historical bad actors need to be rooted out, and we need to promote a culture of compliance, collaboration, and ethics.
Thank you for your testimonies.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we're going to move to our public panel.
We will now move on to public testimony. For those wishing to testify in person, if you have not done so, please see the sergeant in arms in the back of the room and fill out a testimony slip. For those wishing to testify and who are on Zoom, after the in-person testimony, we will move on to virtual testimony. For those on Zoom, you will be called, and a prompt to unmute yourself will appear on your computer. If you are on Zoom and you have not, do not receive a prompt when your name is called, you can use the raise hand function, and we will call on you. But we will begin by in-person testimony. As I call the names, if you could come forward to the table in front. I'll call up the remaining three in-person folks, and if you can come to the table. Renee Keat, Joel Cufferman, and Christopher Leon Johnson.
Hi. My name is Alexa. I'm a new, I'm a NITRA resident, and I've been in NITRA since 1969, and I've been under Section 9. And it's just going to take these private developers off our backs with all this stuff that's being resolved with the 70 employees that took the money? And do, do I get answers on my district manager from District 3, which I don't want to mention his name? And he was present here. He doesn't answer a lot of things that I would like to know about NITRA. And I want, I want NITRA to be saved as Section 9 because of security, because the private developers, it only lasts 20 years on a contract. And after 20 years, people are out of the apartments, and there's no protection with NITRA. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Selina Esmeranda.
If you could just press the button.
I'm Selina Esmeranda. I live in a development that's in danger of being demolished, in the Elliot Chelsea Houses. Public housing have always been linked to NITRA. We don't need NITRA managing us to still be public housing. These fraudulent practices that NITRA have been committing is not a reason to privatize. Public housing was made with a purpose, to prevent homelessness and to house the lowest of income earners. These affordable housing developments have an income bracket that tenants need to meet. The lowest of income earners will not qualify to live under many of these Rad conversions. The only true affordable housing there is, is public housing. Let's hold NITRA accountable. The NITRA employees at the lower level are the ones getting arrested, but many have known for years that these practices have been taking place. Why has it been allowed to go on for so long? And why are they getting exposed now? Who is supposed to be overseeing the NITRA employees that got arrested? It's true. It's time we start holding accountable. The Lisa Bova Hyatt and the Barbara Brancascio's of NITRA, they are using these arrests to justify privatization. No, just follow through on your job function, and NITRA can run smoothly as it's supposed to. Many NITRA tenants are not getting the work orders from their apartment fixed, the major problems such as leaks and mold. But a simple fixture such as changing a light bulb gets done, and the vendor gets paid over $700 for the changing of one light bulb. The funding is available, but our NITRA buildings are being systematically allowed to get run down. The physical needs analysis of our NITRA buildings is skyrocket high to rehabilitate the NITRA buildings. But if they are using the fraudulent cost of changing a light bulb, then the PNA is a miscalculation and need to be revised. The Fulton Elliott and Chelsea Houses.
Finish, finish your statement.
The Fulton Elliott and Chelsea Houses are at risk of being demolished based on lies and deceptive tactics. Our buildings are not deteriorating. Yes, we do need maintenance, but our buildings are harder than brick itself. It would be a crime to demolish. The new buildings built today are made with cheap materials. You have tenants outside of NITRA paying $4,000 or more in those affordable housing units, but those same tenants are not the priority. It's all for profit. Let's not get rid of our retro and well-built buildings. The related company buildings have tenants who stay for an estimate of two years. They realize that they are getting jipped. They move and pay the same and live better elsewhere. Getting demolished is a.
Finish your statement. Keep going.
Getting demolished is a violation of the 2019 Working Group findings. It was decided that not one of our Chelsea NITRA buildings would be, would not be demolished. But once they decided to demolish, the Working Group findings was crumbled into a ball and tossed in the garbage. It's useless at this point and no longer have any validity. In truth, it never had any validity. It was never a legal binding document. Neither is the survey, which they are using to justify demolition. Six tenants from Fulton and six tenants from the Elliot Chelsea was involved in the decision making to be converted into Rad. The rest of the community have not been educated in the process. They do not know the difference between Section 9 and Section 8. FEC tenants started to lose trust in NITRA ever since they started to sell us out to private developers. You want to gain our trust? Stop demolition, stop privatization, and have NITRA meet up to their standard. Many elected officials are also involved in the fraudulent practices. Many need to be investigated and exposed. Please help us. No demolition, no privatization. Hold all of NITRA accountable. And let's replace NITRA employees with people who actually care about the tenants. And also Chris Blanks, please reply to our email. We sent you an email on FEC stop demolition. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Joel Cufferman, Environmental Justice Initiative. Thank you for being here. I've been at NITRA hearings for the last two, three years, and it sort of annoys me that I would say that collectively, we're all guilty of not making things change. Things have gotten worse. I'm really concerned about the environmental conditions. I am counsel to Alfred Smith Houses and work with RPPH, Residents Preserve Public Housing. I've contacted agencies for years, including DOI, the Federal Monitor, City Health Department, and DEP. But now, NITRA has forbidden me to speak to the contractor that's dealing with Smith with a lot of these problems that we're talking about are happening. So complaints have fallen upon deaf ears. So complaints have fallen upon deaf ears, a collective non-response, which serves as an alibi for people's actions. Good contractors, I think it's important for you to know, have avoided working for NITIA, calling it unfair competition. At Smith, we have a contractor that wants to do good work, and they're being silenced. So part of the problem, it's not just a few bad contracts and a few people getting extra money. We're pushing out the bad, and it's just basically, the word on the street is that you could follow the bad stuff, little contracts and big contractors, go to NITIA, and you're there. Poor construction and renovation is not just a financial burden, but a serious health burden. Asbestos-led ruin sewage is hitting people now. We show that in COVID, and COVID's coming back with increased exposure to dust, chronic exposure, that's what all these NITIA residents are getting, leads to a major increase in COVID death. So there's a health problem here, and part of the solution is there's federal and state agencies that should be called in, that have money to help, and NITIA doesn't want to hear from them. All right? This regard for health and safety measures, we put it over and over again. We've caught monitors asleep away from the thing. This is a $300 air monitor that measures better than the monitors that's there. These should be outfitted to residents when they're doing any type of construction work to make a solid record of what's happening.
Please wrap up your statement.
Excuse me?
Please wrap up your testimony.
Okay. So part of the problem is on the inside is cutting into asbestos-led walls. There's a bad actor policy that the city has, that has been invoked, that we used against the bad pesticide spraying. The city ripped up an $8 million contract over two, three OSHA violations. That is one way to clean up NITIA. OSHA has a program called Strategic Partner Participation where they come in and do a complete evaluation of all the work practices, which would help all the residents there for preventing exposure to the workers or whatever. We asked Dan Green, who testified here. First, they said yes, then they limited to Smith, and then they rejected it. That's one way that overnight, you could have the federal government come in and tell you that all the bad working conditions that are on, a free evaluation and recommendations with temporary, you know, waiver of any fines. That's the questions you should be asking. Why are they not turning down help from outside agencies and not just talking? Tenant participation, part of the problem is when people call up to complain, they call up 311. Right now, those calls are being diverted to NITIA. The City Health Department, DEP, and all the other agencies that should be involved, that mandated by city charter, are not even getting those complaints. So part of the problem is the city council is allowing these people to just be forced, you know, talk to the bad landlord and not to agencies that have the mandate to do it. It's unconstitutional and just totally unfair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
I've been here the whole day.
We gotta ramp it up, brother.
Just ask for two more minutes?
No, 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 no. 10 more seconds.
Okay. You should have to strengthen the whistleblower protection. Today, I got called by whistleblowers that work at NITIA that are complaining about work practices. Other whistleblowers have left because they got hounded out. You're listening to them. You should be listening to people that have the inside--
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony. Next.
Thank you.
All right, what's up, everybody? Hello, Chair Banks. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson, and I want to make this clear about this committee hearing. This committee hearing is nothing but smoke screen to what's really, what's really happening here. And I'm gonna say this right now, brother. You got voted in, you got elected through Labor Strong 2023, and the biggest union part of that is the carpenters. Now, the carpenters, they're behind the Rad PAC situation because if you knock the buildings down, they're able to build it back up. The carpenters got you elected over Charles Baron and Jamila Rose. Now, the question, people need to start asking you as the chair, can you be trusted in helping the people here save their apartments at Fulton Chelsea? Because it's hard to trust you as the chair of this committee and as a council member when you are down with the carpenters, who are one of the biggest unions that are pushing for Rad impact. Now, recently happened with that chair, with that hearing, with the 70 arrests, that was nothing but a publicity stunt. That was nothing but publicity. Those are low-level employees of the NITIA Rad, NITIA who got arrested. What they need to start doing is arresting the big people on top, starting back with this lady right behind me, the CEO of NITIA, who need to be arrested with them because she's part of the problem. She's a big part of the problem. NITIA, they want NITIA be eradicated because it's an anchor to the city of yes. All this is about is the city of yes. All you council members are down with Rad impact. All you guys are down with the blueprint. All you guys are down with the displacement of the people of NITIA so you can appease yimbys and open your for-all and transportation alternatives and open plans. And Dan Gredonik and the mayor, Eric Adam--
Thank you for your testimony.
Wait, wait, wait. You let them sit for three, five minutes. Why can't you three, five minutes?
Thank you for your testimony.
Wait, wait. One more, and one more thing--
Thank you for your testimony.
I reside in the Elliott Houses. Thank you for this oversight hearing. The New York City Housing Authority, the largest public housing authority in the nation, was established to provide decent, affordable housing for low and moderate-income New Yorkers alongside with a workforce development program. It was founded on the recognition that private developers wouldn't address the urgent need for housing. The primary partnership lies between NITIA and its residents. And when I say residents, I mean the thousands of residents, not just the Resident Association leaders. Introducing additional bureau leaders is not a solution. PAC Rad is not the solution. The Preservation Trust is not a solution. And demolition is not a viable solution. Currently, 18% of NITIA staff are public housing residents. Embracing the circular economy is crucial. NITIA once had skilled trades to handle the work, but outsourcing leads to resourcing leasing NITIA. At one time, NITIA had skilled trades to do the work. Union jobs translate into higher income, meaning higher rents, meaning the money just goes back from whence it came. The most important part is accountability. Without that, nothing else matters. They need to be made accountable for the decisions they have made. That needs to be worked on, on a city, state, and federal level. If that is not done, anything else is meaningless.
Thank you for your testimony. Now, we're gonna go to the virtual--
For those on Zoom and wishing to testify, I'll call your name, and you'll be prompted to unmute yourself. You can begin your testimony as soon as you're unmuted. The first person will be Aisha Torres.
Good afternoon. I apologize, I heard that I was called early this morning, but I was trying to do the Zoom versus in-person for health reasons. The problem that NITIA has and will continue to have is as long as they don't follow the 964, which is the regulations, that means that we, the residents, are supposed to be part of the process from conception, are totally excluded, right? I have spent a lot of the resident participation funds acquiring, having an attorney so that our rights would not be violated. And even though NITIA has a legal department, it doesn't mean that I feel comfortable with that. I felt that we needed to have our own attorney, and he spoke a little while ago on behalf of some of the things that have happened. So I'm going to speak now, and I'm not gonna talk long. Just know that my anger is filled with grief. At least once a month, I have to go to a funeral for a resident who's dying of 9/11 cancer. And even though we have voiced our concerns, which is why Joel is our attorney, and I will be indebted to him forever, it is really, really, really hard when we've been ignored, right, about the situation. And I'm just gonna talk as the president of Alfred Smith. I am now one of the plaintiffs for the contention. I am now one of the plaintiffs on Beth Israel on behalf of my residents. It is incredible that when we have complained. So what happened last week, and everybody's innocent until proven guilty, right? And I stand by that, that is something--
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
Can I finish? Because everybody else was allowed to talk, and I'm gonna finish real quick.
Yeah, ma'am. You can just wrap it up. You can get another minute.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that we need to make sure that the residents are really spoken to. And part of the problem with these vendors and things like that, and I'm saying this because I've asked, who do I complain to when there's a vendor that I need to throw out of my development? Who's not doing the right job? Who I don't want him to get paid, right? And so, to the point that I had to get an attorney so that certain things would get done. Not take my trees, cut my trees off because it was easier for them instead of protecting them, which the trees help all the residents in my development, right, who have serious lung disease or some kind of cancer to be able to breathe fresh air, right? And no, that doesn't happen. And so, until, until the residents sign off and check off what needs to be done, who better than us to assess if the job is well done? Then the residents, we're the ones who are living. And all of the consequences, right, that have happened because unfortunately, as the chair of Manhattan South, I had like six, three, four developments that were affected by what happened. I have serious concerns for the resident leaders. And for the record, very quickly, one of the resident leaders was complaining constantly. I moved it up, and yes, it was moved up further. But I'm just saying, we know what's going on in our developments. We know what it is to live with quality and without quality. And right now, most of us are living, and I mean, you know, we're taxpayers. We pay rent. We pay mortgage rents. And trust you me, we're not getting taxpayers' quality, and we are not--
All right.
--getting rent for our mortgage.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
As a reminder, everyone who's testifying today, both in person and on Zoom, is encouraged to submit testimony, written testimony via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov or through the council website. The next person on virtual will be Ms. Dana Eldon.
Starting time.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council Chair Banks and the Council Committee members and all in attendance. I'm the resident council president for St. Mary's Park Houses. I sit on the South Bronx Executive Board, as well as being an executive board member of Residents to Preserve Public Housing. In the five years in which I have served in my position here at St. Mary's Park Houses, I have questioned the necessities of certain purchases that only create a more pleasant and new look and/or added to the appearance of the development's in-building's look. I'm sure that, including the residents' councils' input, would not be accepted. However, it is my opinion that when council leaders speak on the work that is going to be done or already has been done, that we be advised of the vendor and any information that would warn us of incomplete work or shoddy work that many council leaders have spoken about. It's already bad enough the council leaders are not advised of our budgets by management. They keep the information secret, and no matter how many times we request that information, it is not obtained. I've been waiting for four years for that information. I have observed in many of my residents' apartments, work that did not appear to be sufficient in the quality of work and materials used. I do understand that vendors being used have been vetted and on a listing. However, I find that difficult to accept, such as like many other developments, the aluminum-based lobby doors. After attending a board meeting of NITIA and hearing the amount of money that was paid towards such vendors, I was appalled that after a year's time, some of those bills paid were in excess of millions of dollars. These aluminum doors are constantly being fixed due to vandalism and extensive wear. So NITIA continues to use these vendors without the consideration of the money spent or the constant repairs that are necessary. The city newsletter cited $4,875 for the replacement of a door to the compact room. That is ridiculous.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
By NITIA for such--
You can finish your statement.
--things as six LED light bulb replacements costing $4,250 and $325 per rubber threads on 15 steps. These charges are unacceptable and rob the residents of NITIA of getting more important jobs done. I currently have a resident who will be 80 years old in April. She has not had a working radiator in her living room since November 2023. Repeatedly, she is told to be patient due to the purchases of wrong items to fix this problem. She is forced to keep a bucket now in that location, which fills up with rusty water. She lives on the 21st floor, the top floor, so she continues to have leaks from the roof and now her heating system. It is important to my council that this situation is remedied as soon as possible due to the litter that is spilled behind the scaffolding necessary as we approach construction to replace our 58-year-old roofs. I'm told that for the two locations of our development, we are paying $8,000 per location for a cleaning service to pick up trash at the development location. Sending 185 notices to the entire development is not the answer to littering. And right now, I have lobbies that are dripping water around lights fixtures. My last. I dare to say that a centralized location where these contractors are vetted and the micropurchases are reviewed are part of a failed system that has failed the residents of public housing. Also, the current system regarding the skilled trade usages are ridiculous as residents are made to wait months in order to get cabinets, plastering, paint jobs, load removal. Just today, a disabled senior sent me a video of her apartment that most of her kitchen items all around her living room due to the lack of cabinets that have not been replaced. She is now forced to wait for plaster that has not been scheduled yet in order for the remainder of her cabinets to replace. As she stated, she is waiting three years.
Can you wrap up?
Therefore, my last paragraph.
Yes.
Therefore, my concern after reading the recommendations of the DOI, it is frightening to think that residents will have to wait for years for necessary work to be done. The quality of life issues that residents are facing is already disgraceful. Please continue to examine all of the expenditures of NITIA, but also I ask that you listen to the active resident leaders who see the lack of concern and the frivolous and sometimes shoddy work being done by vendors in microcontracts that continue to milk the money from NITIA and force the residents to wait for quality of life services. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next person on Zoom will be Eleanor Carter.
Starting time.
Ms. Carter, you can--
Starting time.
Starting time.
Ms. Carter, you could begin your testimony.
Ms. Carter, we're having trouble hearing you. So we're gonna move on to the next person, and we'll come back to you. The next person testifying will be Jacqueline Lara.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Lara. I am a 22-year Fulton resident, and I'm one of the developments that they want to demolish. All these buildings are excellent. I don't see the reason why you have to demolish these buildings, and not only would it affect us, but it would affect this whole community. And we don't get any outreach from our elective officials. These are elective officials that I voted for, that I care about, and they're not representing us. And I, you know, NITIA has so many executives in this office that probably get paid more than the president, and you're telling me that these people got away with all this money being taken away? I don't know how they didn't see this, but obviously, you know, you have to go after the big executives. the big executives, because I'm sure everybody saw they were just ignoring it. And this is why maybe our buildings and apartments have gotten neglected. I have the same cabinets for 22 years, and I fix them as best as I can because I've put in tickets over and over again for new things in this apartment. And it's never, the ticket will either be closed or, you know, there's some reason why I never got new cabinets. But that's fine. I really don't, you know, that doesn't really bother me. What bothers me is that we need to stop this demolition because it's not necessary. And a lot of people will get affected with any kind of asthma or any kind of breathing problems, or the elderly, or the disabled. So please help us stop this demolition. And to my elective officials, you know, I love you guys, and I vote for you, but, you know, you gotta back up the residents. And as far as newsletters, we never get newsletters. That's a lie from that lady, whatever her name is. We never get newsletters. We don't know what's going on in our developments. And the only way we find out is when we go to a community board for. That's how we find out what's going on in our development, because our electric leaders don't tell us much either. You know, everybody's just lying and going, taking baby steps around the residents. So that's all I want to say, and thank you for listening, guys.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next person called will be Karen Blondell.
Starting time.
Starting time. Hi, this is Karen Blondell. First of all, thank you, Chris Banks. This is my first time meeting you virtually. You took over for Councilmember Alexis Avalas, who is our council member, and I look forward to meeting you sooner rather than later. I previously worked at NITIA because I wanted to know if the transformation plan worked. It is working, but it does not cover this area of oversight. I can say that when I became a board member of the trust, I did that to protect residents like myself and to be on the inside to know exactly what would be happening inside of the trust. Prior to the trust, we only had Rad PAC. I was 100% against Rad PAC. But now, thinking about this $700 light bulb, I believe that under Rad PAC with private developers, they would never let anybody charge them $700 for a light bulb. So there are some pros to Rad PAC, and there are some pros to the preservation. I will say that when I found out the Preservation Trust would be using the same NITIA employees, it took me about a month to get myself together. Why? Because I think that there is a lot of oversight needed. NITIA is too big. It needs to be broken down into smaller sections. Managers should be held to task for most of the things that I heard DOI, those recommendations that DOI made in 2021. It's 2024. Let's implement these now. We don't have time to keep on coming back and forth to these hearings. After this, the next thing we'll be talking about is stolen air conditioners. Come on, y'all. Let's get this together. We have to have confidence as residents, as resident leaders, which I am of the Red Hook Houses, and as a board member of the trust, that we're gonna turn this ship around. Because if we don't have that confidence--
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
--we go back to fighting for NITIA or becoming private, which is in a better shape at this point than what's happening now at NITIA, unfortunately. We need an audit on the ground to figure out exactly what are the best ways to stay in control over these emergency contracts. We're gonna need them. There's no way you can run something this big across New York City and not have emergency contracts.
All right.
But we should be tasking with the manager, shouldn't be running around doing court, doing this, doing that. We should streamline what each manager is doing, and then we should start holding people accountable. I yield, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blondell, and I'm looking forward to meeting you, too. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
We'll move on to more testimony, but first, there is someone on the Zoom who is under caller one. If you wish to testify, you'll need to rename yourself, and then we can call you to testify. The next person testifying will be Maria Forbes.
Starting time.
Am I unmuted, sir?
Yes, we can hear you.
I want to say that-- If you can listen to this-- --the lawmakers, the politicians, the Colombian drug lords, all you who lobby against making drugs legal-- Just let me use that as an example, because I want to say that-- The smokescreen, sir, I'm in a meeting right now. The smokescreen of all of this stealing is a reasonable doubt. The reasonable doubt is that the law department tell you what they can do to the employees to what they can't do. For somebody, the unions are rewarding the bad employees, and we are letting go the good employees. People have lost their jobs as a result of what we say is justifiable with NITIA, the unions, to whoever. They tell us our 964 regs govern us. They don't govern us because they don't govern you and they don't govern the Housing Authority. The 964 regs, we sit at the table, we have-- And I could take you to a bigger level, because I sit at the United Nations as the only president of public housing. And I get over there, and I see the U.S. delegation tell me, oh, we gonna call you when we get back to the United States. So then they even said, oh, you know who Alika is? Of course, I know who Alika is. She sat in the same seat that the chairman is sitting today, to Richie Torres sat in that seat. That I'm gonna tell you that this needs to be-- The investigation is bigger than this. And even if the mayor stops allowing the unions to get away with what the unions have gotten away with, the investigation right now need to be launched into the caretakers, like they out every other day. But nobody won't launch, we can't do this, our hands is tied. I spoke to the law department yesterday. I spoke to Dan Green yesterday. I spoke to the superintendent manager, and blah, 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 to all of this.
You can wrap up your statement.
Where does someone be held accountable? So we gotta get rid of the bad to put in the good, but something has to be done between all of this, from the federal level down to the city, to city council, to everybody. Because until investigations start from the bottom and work their way to the top or vice-versa down, we are in trouble. We will continue to arrest some more people, and it's a shame that I've seen this happen to us. It's a shame.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next person to testify will be Tavina Willis.
Starting time.
Hello, I'm Tavina Willis. I'm a Red Hook resident. I've lived out here for 16 years, but I've lived in public housing for over 40 years. And I hope this investigation makes it clear to everybody that the public housing residents are not the problem behind the NITIA issues. For years, everyone made it seem like, oh, well, the people that live in NITIA don't care about where they live at, and this is why this is happening. No, this is happening largely due to the fact that people who are being paid quite a bit decent salaries are basically stealing from public housing. This gross negligent overspending has gone on for decades. Several things have always been overpaid for, like your, the single burner hot plates that are given to residents when there's a gas outage. We were told the price of that, and it's astronomical. And I'm not understanding why this has been allowed for years. So this investigation needs to continue and needs to be ongoing, and some of this oversight needs to be given to the resident councils of each development so that the spending and what money is coming in and out of the development and that the money and the contracts dealing with the vendors on our developments, the TA presidents and the TA associations, they need to be able to have oversight of that so that all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted. A lot of us are working-class individuals who work a lot of hours to pay thousands of dollars in rent to receive very poor services. So across the board, there should be a stop and a pause on any-- NITIA should not be able to convert any development until this issue with the finances is taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Well, next try Ms. Eleanor Carter again.
Starting time.
Ms. Carter, if you can hear us, we're unable to hear your testimony if you want to start. We're still unable to hear you, Ms. Carter. You can certainly submit testimony through the council website or testimony@council.nyc.gov. Well, finally, there is a person on the Zoom called caller one. If you can identify yourself, we'll unmute you now, and you may begin your testimony. But you must identify yourself at the start of your testimony, please.
Starting time.
I mean told there's no response, seen no persons left on Zoom to testify, and no members of the public left in person to testify. I'll return to the chair for a closing statement.
First of all, I want to thank all the tenants who came out to give their testimony virtual and in person. I want to thank the NITIA for staying back and hearing the testimony of the residents, and I'm glad you did, more importantly. Also, too, I want to thank Chair Brewer, thank Chair Juan for bringing this hearing together and working with us to have this hearing today. This is what the responsibility of the committee of public housing is, is to hold NITIA accountable and call for reform. So again, thank you again, guys, and that adjourns this committee meeting.